Okay. Well, good evening, everybody. Welcome to Edina City Hall. Nice to have you all here. It is already the middle of July, July 15th, 2025, and it is 7:00 PM, and this is the regular scheduled meeting of the Edina City Council. As you heard Ms. Bennerott indicate, we are doing these meetings on a hybrid basis, which means that people can call in from home for community comment or for public hearings if we happen to have a public hearing. We're accepting testimony that way, and then they can also appear live here in chambers to also express their concerns to the council, and I think we've got some of those in that category this evening. And so we're welcoming that testimony in all forms, and having provided that information, I'm now going to ask our Clerk Sharon Allison to call the roll as we call the meeting to order.
Councilmember Agnew?
Here.
Councilmember Jackson?
Here.
Councilmember Pierce?
Here.
Councilmember Risher?
Here.
Mayor Hugland?
Here. Next, everybody, is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We've got a meeting agenda that was published, and we have things in different parts of the agenda that are connected to things in other parts of the agenda, and we're trying to sort out how we're going to deal with these things, and then also handle at least one projected gift matter a little bit earlier in the agenda. So Manager Neil has recommended that we move two of the recognitions items off of the consent agenda, that's 6.16 and 6.18, move them off consent and put them at the end of the reports and recommendations portion of the agenda. That we move item 6.15, which would be a potential allocation of unassigned fund balance off consent, and push that back into the reports and recommendations portion of the agenda near the two items we're going to be discussing about, the Aquatic Center. And then we've got an item 6.17, which deals with a petition filed by the Chauvin Park Neighborhood with regard to stop signs. We're going to move that and couple that up with one of the items later in the agenda. And then the items that I mentioned earlier involving a potential gift are items 9.1 and 9.2, and we're going to move those up in behind 7.1, which is going to be a presentation by our Hennepin County Attorney Mary Moriarty. And I hope I didn't confuse my colleagues too much, so I'm going to ask her somebody to make a... Manager Neil did tip us all off on this. I'm going to ask one of our colleagues to make a motion to approve the agenda in its amended form.
So moved.
Councilmember Jackson moves. Councilmember Pierce seconds the adoption of the agenda in its amended form. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adopting the agenda in the form stated, amended form, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. The agenda in its modified form is approved, and let's go now to community comment. And I know we've got some nearby residents here that are going to visit with us, and I see our Hennepin County Attorney has just come in, so she'll be ready to go here fairly soon. But let's go to community comment, and then let's go to folks that are here in the chambers first. And please come up and remember to give us your name and address, and you've been with us before, you know there's three minutes that you'll have to make a presentation. You get a yellow warning light, you'll have 30 seconds left to complete your comments, and then we ask you to wrap up when the red light comes on. So yes, please, I think, and we know well that you're concerned about pedestrian safety over near Avidore and the Senior Center, so eager to hear what you have to say this evening. Thank you.
My name is Nancy Greer, and I live at 5225 Grandview Square, and I'm here again about the crosswalk. I've got a petition. You have the originals, Mayor Hugland, and the council people, you all have copies of the petitions from building 1, 2, and 3. In less than a week's time, I got 133 signatures on that. I went to Avidore and to the Senior Center, but they were not allowed to put the petition up. I would have more if I could have. I will tell you about an experience I had just this morning. I was walking from Avidore to Grandview. I pushed the button. The people coming from east to west stopped. There was a car in the turn lane going into Grandview Square. I had to walk behind that because it was not in the crosswalk. The people coming from west to east, the young girl flashing light, I said, "Stop!" And she went, "Oh, sorry." The car behind her continued, and I had to flail my arms. I shouldn't have to do that. That is a bad bend. They can't see the flashing lights. We need a temporary speed bump there so that people are slowed down, and it's temporary. It can be removed when the snow flies or the project is finished. I think snow flying first is probably going to be the case with that. We do have an increase of 13%, 13.1% in our taxes, and 5.46 of that is supposed to go to safety. I think a temporary speed bump and a flashing light on that bend is a good use of that money. You need to protect the people that are crossing there. We have several people that go to the library that at best you could say their speeds are slow and stop, and they can't get across in enough time with these cars flashing, speeding by them. I don't think we're asking for much here. I think we're asking for you to look at the safety of the people there. You have funneled traffic where there is Vernon Terrace, senior citizen, the three condo buildings, the majority of the people are senior citizens. The Senior Center, the library, Avidore is 55-plus. You've got two medical buildings and then a dental office, along with other businesses. Had I been rooting people around, I would have sent them to Tracy to Benton or Hanson to Benton. They only have to deal with four four-way stops from Tracy to Benton, cross the bridge. If they go left towards the police station in front of Normandale School, they have a half of a roundabout instead of several. Or if they go to the right and they go Valley View and turn at Wooddale to get to the 50th and France area, they have a light at Wooddale. They only have to deal with stop signs. People have not learned how to use the roundabouts yet, and it has buggered up traffic, and you've got senior citizens trying to cross, and I'll stop now. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Greer. I've got your original signed petition here. I'm going to pass it down through my colleagues.
They've all got copies.
Well, they'll have to file it with the clerk. He wants to be, you want it to be part of the record, I'm sure.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, okay. Anyone else? You wish to, from the same, yeah, come on, please come up. And then there's somebody behind you that wants to speak on possibly the same topic, maybe another topic. Go ahead.
Same topic.
It's for David McBride.
David McBride, and I also live at 5225 Grandview Square.
What's your unit number, sir?
410. And I went over to Ace Hardware today, later than Nancy, and did not, was not aware of the difficulty she had. Coming back from Ace Hardware, I usually wait, try to wait until there's no cars coming to press the button to get the flashing lights so that people on their, on their way that are almost there don't need to stop. That's getting harder and harder because there's so much traffic now, far more than what there was a year ago. So I did try to wait, and not many cars were coming. I pressed the button, and I started into the crosswalk, and after about two steps, a young woman from the other side also stepped into the crosswalk, and we were going to meet, oh, a little farther than halfway, but as I got to about halfway, there was a car coming from the east, not from the, from the curve, but from the other direction. It was a truck, didn't even slow down, went right behind me, but a foot or so behind me. If I had been about two steps slower, he probably would have hit me. And I didn't even realize it until he was starting to pass by me, and he hadn't even slowed, hadn't done anything, just zipped right on through. So it is a huge problem, and somebody's going to get hurt before long.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. McBride. Yeah, we've been trying to deal with it, but we're going to continue to work on it, I think, here. So thanks for coming this evening. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Different subject, same building. Good evening. My name is Jan Del Kelso. I live at 112-5225 Grandview Square. I'm president of the Homeowners Association there. As you know, that building is a 70-unit, not 55 and over, but believe me, most of the people are over 55. I want to talk about the streetlight replacement project over there. In April, we got a notice that there would be a streetlight replacement project, and that sounded just fine. They sent along a pretty picture of the decorative light, which we already have decorative lights, so it was great. We were going to have just a one-for-one replacement, as I interpret "replacement" to be. However, that is the source of the whole problem. It really wasn't a problem until we found out after, they came and took all of the lights away about two months ago. It is very, very dark over there. If you go, you're going to have a long council meeting. Drive through there at 10:30 tonight or something, and you'll see how dark it really is there. And it's going to, then the problem became, we got, I went out one day to talk to the workmen who were working across the street from our house, our building, and said, "When you're working in front of that building, there's an irrigation line. Be careful of it." And he said, "Oh, we're not putting any lights over on that side of the street. We're not putting any lights around the park either." And I said, "Well, where are you putting the lights?" "Well, we're putting them in front of the building across the street from you, and we're putting lights on the corners of the park on the opposite side of the street." Well, that means that's going to be very, very dark from now on. I got an email from a person in our building who has a brother who walks frequently at night because of insomnia. He's already during the dark night, has seen a drug deal going down in the parking lot of the Senior Center, and what looked like a homeless man sleeping on the park bench in the park. Now, we never asked for a meeting or anything to explain this project because we thought it was perfectly standard. Now we find out that we're going to be losing 10 lights in that area. The lights along 5225, I've sent you some, are giving you some handouts there, and nothing to replace them. I know it's too late on this project. The bids have been let, the work has been quite a bit finished. I'm here to kind of guilt people a little bit. Be careful of your communications. If you say "replacement," I would say that the majority of people would say, "I give you something, you give me back the same thing," or slightly different. But no, you don't take away 10 lights. So there we are. I, I don't think there's anything else that can be said, except we liked our light, we liked our old lights. How about giving us back our old lights?
All right. Thank you, Jan. Just so I understand you correctly, you're not, you're not anticipating getting the form of streetlight back that you had before?
It's very similar. We were very happy that it is a decorative light that is going to be put in there.
Okay, but there are just, there are fewer in number.
There are fewer in number, and they're not on our side of the street. There's no way that a light on the other side of the street is going to shine enough light on our side of the street to help people. As I said, we've got a lot of over 55 people. There's going to be problems with falls. There could be problems with crime. It just doesn't make sense. I wish we'd have had...
Yeah. Thanks for coming today. I don't think any of us knew about this, so we want to drill down a little bit on it. Thank you. Okay, you've been enthusiastically putting your hand up back there.
I know. I have young kids. Raise my hand, raise my hand.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. My name is Emily Avilas. I live 4008 Grimes Avenue South. I had originally come here tonight to kindly request discussion and planning surrounding EMS response times in the Morningside neighborhood. In light of the recent Sun Current article that outlined barriers to adequate staffing of our EMS team, I would also like to speak up about the importance of adequate staffing of the city's paramedic firefighters to our city as a whole, but will focus my plea on Morningside for tonight. About a month ago, I was called to a neighbor's home who had suffered a cardiac event. This was my first interaction with Edina EMS, and the first time I understood the physical barrier for EMS responding to the Morningside neighborhood due to distance from the fire station, which seems to be further complicated by adequate staffing. In a previous chapter of my life, I worked in the cardiology world where I encountered numerous patients that suffered cardiac events outside of the hospital. I experienced firsthand what all the data supports: time matters. Every minute from the time of cardiac collapse to the initiation of CPR and or defibrillation is directly linked to survival. Again, every minute counts in a cardiac emergency, and the difference in patient survival between a six-minute response time as compared to a 15-minute response time is huge. I have worked with some of the world's best and most talented cardiothoracic surgeons and cardiac interventionalists at Mayo Clinic, Cleveland Clinic, Abbott Northwestern, and the University of Minnesota. And despite all this talent and wisdom, the time from the cardiac collapse to initiation of CPR and defibrillation is still the most important factor in survival and patient outcomes. After the neighborhood event, I reached out to request data surrounding the EMS response times to the Morningside neighborhood be collected and reviewed. I have not heard back from the fire chief yet regarding these current numbers. However, the data collected from the Five Bugles design in December of 2018 demonstrated EMS response times to Morningside of 12 to 15 minutes, with recommendations made for a third fire station in the next five to 10 years. As we are approaching the 10-year mark from the study, I kindly request the planning for the proposed fire station begin. I also request that a plan be in place in the interim for the EMS response times to meet the Edina City goal of six minutes. Other communities have successfully shortened EMS travel interval by adding response vehicles and placing those vehicles strategically in the community, and perhaps City Hall would be a fine temporary location. Unfortunately, my neighbor passed away. Although I am confident that the response time would not have made a difference in this situation, I do know that the standard 12 to 15-minute EMS response time to the Morningside neighborhood falls short of expectations for my neighbors and the children that attend school in the Morningside neighborhood. I am here tonight as a single voice representing the Morningside community, but please know that there have been many discussions in our neighborhood with concern surrounding the EMS response times. I look forward to discussions surrounding how the city of Edina can positively impact the EMS response time to the great neighborhood of Morningside. Thank you.
Thank you, Emily. Thank you for coming in.
Good evening.
Hi, thank you. Ed Mathi, 4011 Kipling, and a 33, now 33-year neighbor in Morningside. I wanted to echo the, as you consider budget availabilities and where those monies might go, I wanted to echo the, the points around EMS response time. Your, your team heard this about a month ago, but I want to make sure all of us are thinking about this as we talk about it, what the fire chief reported, that the current staffing only allows three incidents at one time. And in the first half of 2025, 167 times, there were four or more incidents that meant somebody had to wait. And so rather than a national standard of six minutes or the expectation from the 2018 study closer to 10 minutes, now up to 15 minutes. As we look at monies available, I love parks. I've been here talking, talking that sort of stuff up. I love all the other nice-to-haves. This is a thing that almost 10 years ago, we said we have to have for a safety standpoint. So as we look at available funds, whether it's staffing now and eventually a third fire station, those are super important. There are a ton of people, 750 families in Morningside, all living almost 10 years now with poor response times. So I would urge you to prioritize those and keep those front and center as we look at ways, whether it's contracting with other people to fill the gaps, or additional permanent staffing for a fire department. All those things we should be looking at for safety. Thanks.
Thanks, Ed.
Joanie Bennett, 4003 Lynn Avenue. I've been in your seats before, and I know how difficult is, it is to decide where the money is going to go. But in the priorities you're considering now, whether it's for the unallocated funds from the 2024 budget that you're considering tonight, whether it's looking forward to 2026 budget, please prioritize public safety. Please prioritize the number of fire, of paramedic firefighters. We know that we're short. We know that we're short, and that that's one of the issues. Fire station, fire station number three, I'm sure that you will get to it, but in the short term, we can add more paramedic firefighters, and I really urge you to put the money toward it. It's a matter of reputation. Edina has long had a reputation for excellent public safety. It's a matter of, it's a matter of livability of the city. It's one of the ways that we bill ourselves as being livable. We are known for being livable, but literally, it is a matter of life and death. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bennett. Anyone else in the audience wish to address the council on a matter of concern to them? Yes, ma'am, please.
My name is Rose Bay, and I live at Grandview Square, and I'm actually talking about the same thing that Jan came up to talk about.
Sure. Would you give us your unit number, too, please?
107.
Thank you.
Okay, so I, I'm a singer. I love to sing. And, but I'm not here to serenade Jews today. I'm here really to talk about a problem that we're maybe going to have. I don't know how it's going to work out, but I'm originally from Iowa, and when we came up to Albertville, we had a home built, and my husband got sick. So I was having a hard time getting him here and there and everywhere because we were on the highway, and I didn't, I wasn't very happy about that. And the kids, I talked to my kids. I said, "Kids, it's too much for me." So they said, "Okay, Mom, we're going to find you a place where everything is centrally located." And I said, "That's great." So here we are in beautiful Edina, and I love it here. But the one reason, big reason why we moved to Edina was the location. Everything was close by, and when we got to the Grandview Square, of all the condos that we seen, this turned out to be the best one because my husband could actually wheel himself through the doors. So the one thing that really is important to say today that really bothers me is another reason why we chose this area was because of the lies related, the parks related. And my son hurt his back, and he had to have an operation. And I had to take, I took care of him till he healed, and I took care of the dog, and we went out outside in all kinds of weather, morning, afternoon, and at night. And I can tell you, there are a lot of people in our area that are walking their dogs, and it's dark, and it's spooky, and I'm scared. I'm concerned about what is going to happen if those lights aren't put back in. So hopefully, you will be our ears and our voice to do what is the right thing to do for our area. Thank you for listening.
Yes, thank you. Thanks, Joyce. Anyone else? Okay, let's turn to see if we have anybody waiting online to speak to the council during public comment.
We do not, sir.
Okay. Okay, folks. Well, thanks for coming in. Our practice is that we'll refer all these concerns to staff, and then we'll address them in two weeks at this meeting again. And you may see something online from Manager Neil on Friday, as early as Friday, in response to some of the questions. And I think I probably, like my colleagues, were curious about this lighting plan for Grandview Square, and we don't know much about it yet, but it does seem like an interesting issue.
Yeah.
Help, Commissioner Jackson.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like an update on the crossing because we had a pretty vigorous conversation about that pedestrian crossing and how dangerous it was, and I thought we were taking some actions, and I know we trimmed some trees and stuff, but I'd like to know immediately what the plan is because it is, has been a problem all summer, and it is very dangerous there.
Manager Neil may have something that he was going to give in his report, but nonetheless, I'll turn to Director Miller.
Yeah, he's the guy.
So, thank you, Mayor, Mayor's Council. We did trim trees, improved sightlines. We installed advance warning signs. They're not the flashers. And the same contractor that's doing the street lighting project is installing the base for the flasher. So it takes time to install this stuff, a big concrete, six-foot, 48-inch deep base. So the base is going to get installed in the next week or so, and then we have the flasher that would be installed after that. So we're working on it as quickly as we can get contractors in place to do the work. That's the struggle we're having.
What about one of these temporary speed bumps? What about the, you know, we've got, we've got those in our arsenal, I think, that we could put out there to slow people down, especially the ones, I think, that are coming off the curve and down the hill heading west to east?
Yep. We're going to make some major traffic changes in the next week. We're going to close this northbound on-ramp. I think traffic is going to get more dense, more, there's really not a speed problem there. It's just, there's so many cars, and there's bad behaviors. I think the safest place to cross is the Vernon Signal, which is just a few yards up the hill there, and that's a fully controlled traffic signal. That suggestion was made, but it wasn't received very well from some of the residents. I know it's a longer walk and a longer distance, but that, I don't know if we're going to make this crosswalk safe with the, how many cars are going to go through there now, and there's going to be way more when we start closing these ramps, just to be frank. I think they should use the Vernon Signal.
Oh, one. Councilmember Jackson.
For the summer.
Frustrating.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's very dangerous, and, you know, I...
Councilmember Risher.
I, when you say "use the Vernon Signal," what kind of pathway leads to that? Because I know some of the sidewalk is just this meager brick kind of narrow thing. Is that what we're talking about?
No, there's an actual sidewalk on the south side of Eden up to the intersection of Vernon. Then you'd have APS push buttons with countdown timers and flashers and full signal. And as you're heading to the, towards Jerry's, then you have opportunity to go past the bus stop. So there's a sidewalk there, and it enters right into the Jerry's parking lot, which most of these individuals are trying to get to. Now, if they continue to go down there, then yes, you're going to enter that brick crosswalk that's only two feet wide if you're trying to get to Caribou or Holiday. But if they're trying to get to Jerry's, that could be a better, safer route.
I think speed, we did hear speed is a problem, and I agree with my colleagues, you know, that having a speed bump seems to be a logical thing. But, I mean, we need to do something. We, we can't just punt this. So, thank you.
Councilmember Pierce.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So I just had, can you help us understand why not the temporary speed bumps?
I don't think it's going to change behaviors. I think you're going to have those same interactions. They're just going to be more upset now that they bounced over a speed bump. They're not going to yield to the, if not yielding to pedestrians today with flashers, with cars bumper to bumper, a speed bump, I don't think, is going to change that.
If that's the case, do we think the, the new intersection controls are going to change it?
This summer, I do not.
Okay.
I don't.
So your position is because of the level of density and traffic?
Correct.
Because of the closures, it's difficult to control that.
It was difficult when traffic was low. We had these bad behaviors. Now we're tripling that because there's, we just need the route to detour traffic.
Yeah, I guess I'm trying to, like, I feel like I'm trying to help you.
Appreciate it. It's not a bad thing.
Yeah. Right. Like, we don't want to send the message that there's nothing we can do. I totally hear you on the density. That actually makes sense. There's more traffic going through there than should be once everything gets done. But it sounds like the intersection in and of itself is challenging, and I don't, and so maybe there needs to be a different solution for pedestrian traffic across that, that street, versus saying to someone, "Well, you got to go to the light." I agree, the light is going to be the safest, right? There's a crosswalk there, there are lights there. It's a controlled intersection in all four directions. And so my question would be, if we don't think what we're doing now is going to help in future, then we need a different solution for it.
Well, we're at the, nearly the highest level that you can provide for a mid-block crosswalk. Well, we're at the, nearly the highest level that you can provide for a mid-block crosswalk. But what we have installed is not for the traffic.
Highest level of, I'm sorry.
Safety features. There's only one more level and that's almost a, a signal over the top of the road, which there's no way we'd have time and money to install this year. So we're at almost the maximum. After the big interchange project's done, traffic's going to go way back down again and it'll be back to what it was. This is just this interim solution during this major construction project that we need to consider whether this is best to have a crossing there at all or not. If we looked at warrants today with the number of traffic, we probably wouldn't recommend a crosswalk to be there today. So that's where I'm suggesting that maybe in the best interest and safety is not to have one.
Well, I do know that when I met with you guys to understand how we make those decisions, one of the primary concerns in adding additional controls is it gives, it can give a false sense of security, which causes more issues. And so that would be a, a concern as well. But this is just one, I'm not sure how we solve it in the interim. I just wanted to make sure people understand that we do care about it. I'm actually not sure how to solve it in the interim.
Are we ready to anything?
Yeah, I guess I'm curious. You mentioned that you don't think that a speed bump would necessarily improve the situation. Do you think it would harm the situation or is it something that we could try?
We could try it. Can always try.
Yeah. I think it goes back to this lived experience that we talked about upstairs in our work session. I mean, you, you've got, we've got a problem, you don't even think the solution that, that member Pierce asked a really telling question. And you gave an honest answer that even the things we're going to do aren't going to help that much. So let's, let's throw some more attempts at it and see if we can help with that lived experience and make people a little bit safer.
Okay, we'll talk with, through the traffic safety personnel.
And put up some big signs that say, slow down. And this bad behavior thing is, that's, that educational component of it is difficult.
Correct.
It's, it's really disturbing that people driving realize that the tight quarters in there, people trying to go back and forth across the street because of the construction on 100. And they should be really mindful for pedestrians. So I don't know. Member Jackson.
So I have a very low-tech idea that, I don't know what the residents would think of this, but can we put a, a laminated sign that says, please be warned, this is, this is not its usual safetiness. If you want maximum safety, go to the corner to cross the street. Or something, you know, word it in a polite way. But just to, to let the pedestrians know that there is an alternative because people get in their habits and don't think. And maybe say, this is a temporary situation. For maximum safety, go to the corner and use the light. So that's a low-tech answer.
Low-techer, yeah.
Okay, we'll consider it. Thank you.
All right, on to Manager Neil to report out on some of the concerns of residents that occurred a couple of weeks ago.
Thank you, Your Honor. And I'll try to be brief because I know we've got our speaker in the audience today, too. We had four questions at our June 17th meeting. First question was, what is the cost estimate for the France Avenue underpass? How has that information been communicated? The estimated cost of the conceptual project has been posted to the city's website since August of 2024. The November 7th, 2024 feasibility report included an early-stage cost estimate of the, of the conceptual plan of approximately $19.5 million, including engineering, financing, administration, and contingencies. It's also on bettertogether.org and it has been, we loaded that in in the spring of, of this year. Next question was, why was the public not notified when state legislators were put under police protection June 14th? This was called, something called a protective detail. And we do not share the details of that with the public because alerting the community of that kind of protective detail can compromise the tactics and the, and the logistics of the people that are trying to do their jobs. And it can lead to increased risk to not only the officers, but the individuals. And that's a pretty standard, that's a pretty standard way of doing business for police departments. When a potential threat is received by the police department, the department will take the necessary actions as soon as possible to protect the safety of the community. And that's indeed what happened in this case. The next question was, will the police department develop a policy for residents to call in and make sure their contact with police officers is legitimate? We think that's important, too. The Edina Police Department encourages anyone who questions the legitimacy of a police officer making a contact with them to contact the police department at 911. So call 911 if you're concerned and get a verification that that person on your porch who's knocking on your door is indeed an Edina police officer. And they would tell you that if it was. Finally, there's a question about will the city limit parking on Wilson Road? The answer is no. At least now, the, the Traffic Safety Committee found that the road width and site context adequate for one-sided parking, that, those pavement markings have been installed and the new condition is in play.
Good. Cause any questions for council members? All right, thanks, Manager Neil. We're now going to go to the consent agenda. And council members, let me know if I got this right. We're going to remove 6.15, 6.16, 6.17, 6.18 and deal with those in different parts of the agenda. And if there's anything else that I missed there that we should be removing from the consent agenda before we vote on the consent agenda, let me know. Okay, hearing nothing. Is there a motion to adopt the items on the consent agenda, portion of the agenda in a single motion with the exception of items 6.15, 6.16, 6.17, and 6.18?
So moved. A second.
Councilmember Jackson moves. Councilmember Agnes seconds the adoption of the items on the consent agenda in a single motion with the exception of items 6.15, 6.16, 6.17, and 6.18. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the items on the consent agenda and the manner, uh, move, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried? The consent agenda is approved with the exception of items 6.15 through 6.18, which will be handled in a different part of the agenda. And now we are on to special recognition and presentations portion of the agenda. And while we were in community comment, our Hennepin County Attorney, Mary Moriarty, she came into the room and I see some, she has some folks with her and coming to give us an annual update of the activities that the county attorney's office has been involved in. We got to know each other a couple of years ago and haven't had as much interaction as I'd probably like. And that's, that's not her issue. We just haven't been crossing paths and been involved in the same sorts of activities like we were at the beginning of her tenure. But she has been involved in, as many people know, the criminal justice system for all of her adult life and has some real passionate thoughts and views of how justice ought to occur. And is steadfast in those beliefs. And, and we're, I look forward to her report tonight about the activities in the Hennepin County Attorney's Office during her time there and serving the residents of Hennepin County, including the residents of Edina. So, uh, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. I, in terms of us getting together, I'm hoping that you'll respond to my email about us getting together to talk.
All right.
Because I would like to share what we're doing. And that's part of my reason for being here is that we, at the Hennepin County Attorney's Office, are very transparent. We want to connect with people in the community and answer their questions about public safety.
I guess I felt that was why I had to get ahold of you, I guess. I'd forgotten that you had written to me. So my apologies, sorry. I'll get back to you. We will get together.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you. I was just curious about your comment. So, okay, so I, you all have copies of our presentation. I am not going to get through that entire thing, but we still included some of the slides because we just want you to have a takeaway as to some of the initiatives we're doing with our office. But I just want to give a quick overview here because there are things that community sometimes doesn't understand because the system is pretty complicated. So we're on slide three here. This is a timeline about how, what happens with cases. So as you can see there, crime occurs and it says, and is reported to law enforcement. As Chief Milburn can, can confirm, a lot of crimes actually aren't reported to law enforcement. So we have, we start with the crimes that are reported to them. Some law enforcement agencies divert cases before they send them to us, some don't. But law enforcement can also investigate. They can decide whether to submit a case to our office for potential charging or they can decide that there isn't enough evidence there to submit the case to us. When law enforcement clears a case and submits it to us, that is when we typically enter into the process. Although I'll give a huge shout out to Chief Milburn here. We have a great relationship with he and his officers. And our people have worked with he and his officers before cases get to us. So I think we have a very good working relationship there. So what happens when we receive a case? You can see on this slide, we, our people look at the evidence and we decide, okay, do we want to send it to diversion? Do we want to charge it? Do we want to decline to charge it? Those are our three options. If we do charge it, we also have a number of different options that you can see there on the right. So the next slide. What we did in some of these slides is to just compare Hennepin County versus Edina. So that you could see overall in Hennepin County, and we have something like 38 different agencies in Hennepin County. So overall, the numbers of cases that we are receiving, as you can see there, juvenile is kind of the purplish color, adult is blue. You can see it over a period of years. So for instance, I came in in 2023. You can see in Edina, which is on our right side there, you can just see the history of the cases that our office has received from the Edina Police Department. Now, this is usually interesting to people. It's the common types of offenses that we get from all agencies in Hennepin County and from Edina. As you can see here, shoplifting, credit card fraud, that kind of thing is the number one type of case we get from Edina, which is not surprising at all given South Dale Retail, that is probably the highest type of case we get from Bloomington as well because of the Mall of America. So it just depends on the particular jurisdiction. But, but a lot of times people are interested in what kind of cases, what kind of crimes do you actually see here in your community? Now, the next slide here talks about charging decisions. Charging decisions on the left side for all of Hennepin County and on the right side for Edina. If you look at Edina, and this goes from 2018 to 2024. So for instance, in 2018 through 2022, ranges from 55% to a high of 62%. In 2024, we charged 55%, which is the same percentage that was charged in 2018. So there's not a big difference there in terms of what are, or how often our office is charging. What is a bit different there, when you look at Edina, if you look on the right side there to divert it, you can see those percentages are higher than the average percentages for Hennepin County being diverted. That is because we see a lot of property theft types of crimes because that's the number one offense here. And those are the types of crimes that we often divert. And I'm going to talk a little bit about the success of diversion there. But that's why those numbers for Edina are a little bit higher than the average in Hennepin County. So youth diversion. So what does this mean exactly? What is diverted, diversion, that kind of thing? The idea is that we will send a youth or an adult to what's called a diversion program. That is supposed to be tailored to address whatever the issue is that brought them to us or to the attention of your police. Now, the data on this, on diversion is very good. When you look at this slide, number eight, recidivism means, are they coming back essentially into the court system? Are they getting charged with another case? So if you look at youth within one year, are they coming back to court with a new case? If they are not diverted, they come back into court at a rate of 32%. If they are diverted, they come back at a rate of 23%. So you can see the recidivism with two years and any recidivism at all. Overall, if we send a youth to diversion, they are 36% likely to come back to the court system, but 45% if we don't divert them. So those are pretty good numbers in terms of diversion. We are trying to figure out how to improve those numbers as well. So adult diversion, these numbers are fantastic. What about, if somebody doesn't do success, or isn't successful in diversion, they are likely to come back into the court system at a rate of 20%. But if they are successful in diversion, they come back at a rate of 4%. And look at the overall numbers there. Any recidivism, if somebody is unsuccessful in diversion, they will come back at a rate of 39%. But if they are successful as adults in diversion, it is 13%. Those numbers have huge implications for public safety because obviously we don't want people coming back into the system. So for certain people, diversion is really, really successful in keeping them from coming back into the court system, which also means from harming somebody else, taking somebody's property, that kind of thing. So I want to talk a little bit about law enforcement numbers. And this is really where Edina shines comparatively to other police in Hennepin County. So why does clearance matter? This is really important because I get asked frequently. I, or perhaps criticized for, you know, you're not sending people to prison for long enough or the sentences aren't long enough. And I will say to people, actually, the certainty of being caught is a much more powerful deterrent than a long punishment, especially when you're talking about young people. Young people are not thinking, if I do this, then this. And so the key to deterrence is the certainty of getting caught. And that specifically relates to the police activity and whether police are likely to catch them. So if people perceive that they are likely to be caught by law enforcement, that is a big deterrent. In fact, that's the most successful deterrent that we have. And as you can see there, research is pretty clear that increasing the severity of punishment does little to deter crime. So this, I, I was looking at this, it's very impressive. Look at, this is clearance. So generally what it means is that when law enforcement gets a case and they submit it to us for potential charges, it, it's clearance. Have they cleared the case? So if you look at this graphic, you're seeing all of Hennepin in the blue, but you're seeing Edina in the orange there. Look at crimes against persons. Look at all of Hennepin County. And these are going to be robberies, you know, anything that involves a person-type of related offense. The clearance rates for law enforcement in all of Hennepin County are 37%. The clearance rates for the Edina Police Department on person-related offenses is 80%, much, much higher. And when you look back at deterrence, that is, you know, if people think they're going to get caught at that certainty, that does deter people from committing crime. These are also tougher crimes, crimes against persons, because very often when somebody is harmed, they don't have a good description of the person, understandably, right? So they can be really hard to prosecute and hard for police to put together a case. So I want to talk a little bit about motor vehicle theft. That's a, under the umbrella of crimes against property. So you can see in all of Hennepin County in 2024, there were 8,207 reported car thefts. Now, I said that a lot of cases are not reported to law enforcement, but car theft and homicide are two of the most reliable reports. Car theft because of insurance. People report it because of insurance. Now, if you look at the clearance rate, so how many of those 8,207 cases actually got submitted to us for potential charges? We have a rate of 3%. Now, Edina does a lot better than that, but all in all, law enforcement struggles with trying to put together a case on car theft. And that's for a number of reasons. We had a TikTok video. How many of you are familiar with the TikTok video that encouraged or showed young people how to steal a Kia or Hyundai? Yeah, in 90 seconds or less, right? And so unlike most crime trends, car theft just skyrocketed across the country. That was not just here, it was all across the country. And I've got some data showing that we're doing much better on that now and the trends are going way down. But young people, we're seeing a lot of young people in a car and they would ditch the car and run away. Or law enforcement wouldn't chase them understandably because of, of safety concerns. Or somebody would get caught with a car a couple of days later, or a bunch of people would, and it would be hard for law enforcement to be able to prove, well, who actually took that car? Did the people in the car know that it was stolen? And unlike TV, you don't get forensics like DNA and fingerprints in a day. It takes weeks, months. And so there are many good reasons why it's difficult for law enforcement to. And so there are many good reasons why it's difficult for law enforcement to sometimes put together a case for car theft. And so that was something that we heard loud and clear when we met with law enforcement. In my first year here, I met with all of the police chiefs, and I said, what would you like from our office? And they very clearly said, communication. We've not had good communication from your office. And so what I did was set up meetings with all of the police chiefs. Once a month, we broke them into four groups. So I met with them four times a month in those small groups. I also appointed a really senior prosecutor in our office to be liaison to law enforcement. And so every police chief has his cell phone number and can contact him or me, for that matter. They have my cell phone number anytime they need assistance. So these are some of the things that we are working on at the office, but I want to skip to the Youth Auto Theft Initiative. When we met with police, they said, yes, it's difficult to be able to tie a particular person, particularly a young person, to a car theft, but we pretty much know who these young people are. So we can't bring you a case, but we know who these young people are. What law enforcement crime analyst also told us is that unfortunately, young people who are involved in car theft are escalating to more dangerous crimes within a matter of months. So before I took office, our office's position was, if you cannot bring us a case, there's nothing we can do. But we were seeing, okay, well, for good reasons, law enforcement wasn't able to bring us a case, but we can't just sit and wait because that behavior may escalate into carjacking, robbery, guns, that kind of thing. So we worked with law enforcement to develop our Youth Auto Theft Initiative. And the idea there was to create a pathway for voluntary services for young people and their families. And also, we expedited the, our role in the legal system. Before I took office, it would take our office probably weeks, maybe months, to charge car theft on an out-of-custody basis, if that person wasn't in jail. We reshuffled our staff to be able to do it within days. We worked with the bench to be able to have a very quick appearance for young people in juvenile court, so that they weren't waiting for months. Because what was happening was, it would take weeks for us to charge. It would take weeks or months for them to see a judge. And then a year later, you were trying to impose some kind of sanction for a young person who didn't even remember what you were really talking about. And we know with young people, you need very quick interventions. So we worked on all of that. And so what we did with law enforcement was to say, just give us the names. Don't worry about a case. Obviously, we'll look at a case, we'll charge a case if you've got a case, but give us the names. We will run them through all of our databases, and if those young people aren't receiving services through the county, through child protection, through our youth prosecution, through county behavioral health, our social worker will reach out to the family and see what they need. So that's what we did for a year. We had one of our social workers on staff reach out, and he was very persistent. He actually reached 97% of the guardians or parents, because he would show up at their doors. He was very persistent. And what I was really happy to hear was that all of those parents or guardians said, I am not surprised that my young person is on your radar screen. But they also said, please help. I don't know what to do. And so our social worker was able to refer them to a wide variety of services, which I think I don't have in my slideshow. Oh, there it is. Okay, on the right side there. What we would do was, you know, there's a wonderful county program called FRSS, Family Response Stabilization Services. My guess is, most of you have never heard of it. You can call them, anybody can call them, a parent, a neighbor, anybody. And within two hours, they will have a culturally specific group there at the person's home to find or to figure out a stability plan. They're fabulous. So we would connect them with them, or mental health resources, or case management. Sometimes it's transportation, sometimes it's food, clothing, all of those types of things. We would connect them to those services so that they, that young person could get stabilized and hopefully get off that path. So we, in the first year when we did this, we had 127 referred to our social worker for services. Eighty-five of those young people, which is 67%, had no new case, charged cases between that date of referral. Thirty-three percent of them did. But remember, these are young people who would never have come into the system. They never had a case, because they're just, it wasn't diversion or anything like that. Because for law enforcement to be able to refer a case to us, they at least need probable cause. We need proof beyond a reasonable doubt. So what this says is, these are voluntary services, and, you know, 67% of those young people and families who took advantage of these services were not being referred to us. So in my mind, this is 67% of young people who will hopefully never come into the system at all. This is intervening early on to prevent that escalation of behavior, and it's been really highly successful. This is also great data. Take a look at this. So year-to-date through July 8, 2025, we received 30% fewer juvenile motor vehicle theft case submissions from law enforcement compared to last year, but 49% fewer than 2023. And on the right side there, from January to May 2025, the total motor vehicle thefts reported or known to law enforcement in Hennepin County was 28% lower compared to the same time period in 2024, and 50% lower compared to the same time period in 2023. So the trends here are really, really good. Car theft is going down in Minneapolis and Hennepin County. So I, the, some of the things I just wanted to touch on quickly. So we have a Domestic Abuse Service Center in downtown, and I think this is a really important resource. The Domestic Abuse Service Center is kind of on the umbrella of the county attorney's office, but it is also separate from our office. It's within our budget. But here's, anybody can access it, and you don't need to go through our office. Anybody can call or just show up at the Domestic Abuse Service Center. What you're seeing there in Slide 19 is a child's playroom. You're seeing it through some glass where a parent can be talking about, you know, what's happening to them with one of our staff, where they can keep an eye on their child, but their child can't hear what the discussion is about. So our people, we have, we've served over 5,000 people in 2024. They meet people where they're at. That doesn't mean that there's pressure on them to prosecute. Our staff tries to figure out, what do you need? Do you need a safety plan? Do you need housing? What do you need? How can we help you? And the hope then is too, that they will build a trusting relationship that so perhaps if there is a domestic assault, that they will come forward and potentially prosecute. But I think it's a really valuable resource for people to be aware of, because anybody can access it. You can just come on down, you can call, and our staff will meet people where they're at. So gun violence is a huge issue. It is the leading cause of death for young people in the country and in Minnesota. There are a couple of things that we have done to try to address gun violence. So how many of you know Minnesota has a red flag law? We have a red flag law that came, the legislature gave us a couple of years ago. But it was very confusing. What does it mean exactly? It is called an extreme risk protection order. Now, the wonderful thing about it is that a family member, a household member, or law enforcement can seek an order temporarily taking somebody's guns away if they are struggling with a mental health crisis. So this is a way of getting guns out of somebody's hands who may be at risk of using them and harming themselves or others. And a family member can petition for that, law enforcement can petition for that. There is due process here. It doesn't have to be permanent, and it's a good way of getting guns out of people's hands. And to show you how the red flag law part of it works, we had a case last year where a household member said, our loved one is threatening to go buy a gun and harm herself. They got the petition, it's very easy to do, the courts have made it very easy. Our office helped, law enforcement helped. They got the red flag that day. That woman went to, I can't remember where, Dick's or Shields or something like that, where they sell guns. She tried to buy a gun, and when the employee or employee looked in the computer, which is what they were supposed to do, that flag popped up, and they would not sell her the gun. She was very angry about it, but she left without access to that gun, which at least gives her some time to hopefully think about, you know, another path. So this has been extremely successful, but we were aware that it was really confusing to community, to law enforcement. So I hired a woman who, we wanted to try to coordinate and work on training with law enforcement, and she, her name is Raina Alexander. If you would like her to come talk somewhere in community, she's wonderful. We were actually just able to hire a community advocate to work with community organizations, domestic violence groups, anyone who wants to know, hey, if I have a loved one who's struggling with something like this, what can I do? The other thing we did was that a couple of months ago, we were able to implement a collaboration with the Department of Public Safety to get free gun locks in about 12 Hennepin County libraries. So there are 12 libraries you can walk into, you just ask for a free gun lock, it's given to you, no questions asked. So that's been going very well as well. So I'm going to stop there. There are a bunch of other things that we're doing here, and as I said, you can take a look, and I'm always happy to answer questions. But I did want to leave some time for you to ask any questions that you might have.
Yeah, thank you. There may be some questions from my colleagues. It was a great report with a lot of data driving it, and very informative for us, and I think for our residents who watch the city council meetings and pick up this information. And I think we'll probably also post it on our website.
Thank you.
If that's satisfactory with you, we'll post it up, and I think it'll be helpful for people.
Actually, at the very end of it, we have Linktree. So we have a data dashboard that's public, anybody can look at it.
Yeah, good thought.
We have a bunch of explainers, so those are videos. So if somebody wants to know what an UPO is, or they can always look at those videos. So thank you for posting it.
Yeah, you're welcome. Let me check. Councilmember Jackson.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the presentation, very helpful. So just so that, I'm a little confused, and the public might be as well. When you say successful versus unsuccessful in diversion, tell me, what is success? I don't quite understand that.
Yeah, we're working on that, because typically what's happening is that somebody who's not successful in diversion, it means they probably never got into the diversion program in the first place. And partly, that has been because we send out a letter, and then the person has to do something. They have to reach out and contact the diversion program. So what, one of our managers has been working on for a very long time is to try to get somebody from diversion in the courthouse, so that when that person is in court and they agree to go to diversion, they are walked right over to that person, and that connection is made. So that is one of the things that we're doing. We're also trying to explore what makes a successful diversion program. Are we meeting people where they're at? Are we helping them? So I think, obviously, getting them connected with it is huge. So if somebody is not successful, that means they come back into court and they go through the court process. It doesn't just mean we forget about it and, you know, too bad. They come back into court and go through the regular process.
Okay, so just to be perfectly clear, diversion has been offered to people, and some of them take it up, and we have very low recidivism. Some of them don't take it up, and we have a higher rate of recidivism. But not everybody is offered diversion.
Oh, absolutely not. And I should say first, I think the issue is, when we send out letters, we often aren't given accurate addresses. And that's because people are living in different places, they're going couch to couch, or they're just unsheltered, something like that. And so it's not necessarily that they turn down the opportunity, they may not have ever known about it. But no, diversion is usually, usually for somebody who has no record, it's for property offenses. We don't divert violent offenses, we don't divert carjacking, you know, that kind of thing. This is really for property types of offenses, low-level offenses that we have.
Terrific. Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you.
Councilmember Pierce.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Again, thank you for the presentation. I had one question. Your Slide 11, when you talked about clearance, that was really interesting. And so the, I guess the question I have, if police deter crime by increasing the perception that criminals will be caught and punished, how can we do more of that? How do, how do we set that perception? Like, how does that get?
Right. And I think that has to do with, it certainly gets around if people get caught, right? And, you know, I'll tell you with the car theft, to give you an example, in Minneapolis, I think we had 7,500 car thefts in 2023, and 1.6% of those made it to us for potential charging. And very low, right? And so certainly, people know, and you know, there was, there's been a lot in the media about, oh, these are the same people, and that's true. That's true. However, if the case never comes to us, we can't do anything with it. And we certainly understand why it can be very difficult for law enforcement to make an arrest. So, you know, like, when I look at the 80% clearance rate here on person offenses, you know, I don't know if word of mouth gets around, but certainly, it keeps people from committing those types of crimes again, because if we get a case and we can prove it, we will prosecute it. But I think it, I mean, I think word gets around. People know, you know, whether people get caught. And certainly, with car thefts, people weren't getting caught, especially young people. And so we do see some of the same young people that are out doing that. But I think just the clearance rates themselves actually help, because a lot of the people involved in especially car theft are repeat, especially young people. And so if we can stop that, if a case gets to us or before, that's going to deter, obviously. And then if people figure out, oh, if I steal a car, I'm going to get caught. If I rob somebody in Edina, I'm going to get caught, people are going to know that. Now, having said that, lots of times, people aren't thinking about crimes. And I'll give you an example. We prosecuted the very first successful wage theft case in Minnesota a couple of months ago, right? That's a situation where I think there's deterrence, because the people who are engaging in wage theft, up until now, it's mostly been a fine if it comes to the attention. But when they start thinking, oh, I could be criminally prosecuted, not just, oh, I might have to pay a fine, that's a cost of doing business, that's really deterrence, right? Because people who are engaging in that kind of thought process are deterred from engaging that behavior if they think there might be a consequence. So that's probably a better example of it.
Thank you.
Thank you for the question.
With respect, I was looking at Slide 7 on the diversion. When you make a decision to potentially divert, do you talk to the local police department about that first, or is that an internal decision made at the county attorney's office, and then you just alert the local PD?
It's going to depend. You know, I think if law enforcement, so since I've been there, and I think this happened with COVID, and it happened with electronic filing, electronic everything, I think the communication between law enforcement and us, and us and law enforcement kind of got more difficult because of email, that kind of thing. Where it used to be that we would see them in person, right? They would see us in person, and we've made it a priority to get out to police offices to do training, if we can. But we have also made it a point of emphasis for our people to reach out to the investigator to talk about a case that's declined, to talk about a potential disposition, to make sure we have all of the information that we need to make a decision. And we're not perfect at that, but I think we're doing much better. And so I think in a lot of our diversion cases, that's probably a decision made without consultation of police, but police probably aren't too surprised about that, because it's a property case. Really, what people are looking for is restitution, they want their money back if they've been damaged in any way. Now, there's some cases where law enforcement, and I can't think of one with Edina, maybe there is one, but, you know, we had one recently with Minneapolis, they were mad about it, that we diverted it. And, you know, to me, we're never going to agree on everything, but my goal has always been to have really good communication with law enforcement, really good discussions, so that when we're making a decision, we know what we need to know, and we've heard law enforcement. And then we may make a decision that they disagree with, and we can agree to disagree. So I'd say in most of the cases, we're not going to take up law enforcement's time. You know, like, there's a shoplifting or, you know, felony theft from South Dale, does, you know, Chief Milburn or the investigator want to know if we're going to divert that? Probably not. But if it's somebody who's repeatedly doing it, something like that, hopefully, we are having some discussions.
Okay, good. Well, I think we all want to thank you for being here, and it's good to have you all in Edina, and I don't know if you can make it annually, we'd love that if you could.
Yes, I would love to.
And thanks for that gentle reminder that communication balls in my And thanks for that gentle reminder that communication balls in my court.
Yes. I've been waiting for you to respond to my email to me, so thank you.
I already sent myself an email. Hey, tell me, you're supposed to get ahold of Mary. All right, okay.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for being here. And next I'm going to bring up, we're going to turn now to items 9.1 and 9.2 before we go into the report from Andrew Cipione about the pedestrian cyclist safety fund. And Perry Vedder has this matter, and we've got a couple of our, our longtime residents here, and their family have been here for generations, and they're so generous. Really wonderful to have them here this evening, and patiently waiting in the back. And we're going to go from crime and punishment to talking about a lot of pleasure, I think, instead, that people are getting out of a particular kind of support that family foundations are supporting from this group of folks in our community. So Director Vedder, go ahead.
Thank you, members of the council. Good evening. I am here this evening to present to you technically two items. But the first is the potential for a restrictive donation, very philanthropic gesture to the community, and that's for the expansion and upgrades at Roslin Park for the Moody pickleball courts. And I'd like to acknowledge Mr. Bruce Moody and Mr. Paul Moody are here this evening. Take you back about 10 years, Mr. Moody approached city staff back then about building the City of Edina's first dedicated pickleball courts. And those were studied by park staff and the Parks Commission, and were, the site that was selected was at Roslin Park, kind of between the art center and the aquatic center along 64th Street, right on County Road 62. Those courts were donated by the, by the Moody family in recognition of Mr. John Moody and Mr. Melvin Moody, dear members of their family. And since then, the sport and their popularity has exploded. Recently, in the last several years, city staff has converted the existing tennis courts to four crossover courts, meaning they're allowed for dual use. They are striped for pickleball and for tennis. However, they are not dedicated courts due to their size limitations. So recently, Mr. Moody has approached the city again about an additional philanthropic donation on behalf of the family, and that is to expand those courts. So they need to expand a little bit to the north, about 11 feet, and that would create six dedicated pickleball courts at that playing surface. And then, once that portion of the project is completed, the existing pickleball courts would be converted to four pickleball courts. And the idea there is that each one would be dedicated courts, they would have fencing separation and gates, which they do not now, so balls can go in between play versus various courts. And this would be a better situation for players to contain the play within those courts. So we would go from the five dedicated, the four overlay courts, to an actual 10 dedicated pickleball courts that would be of high-end use. This would be considered one project, but it would be broken up in two phases. So the first existing work would be on the tennis court side, to prep and prepare and open up those courts, before work would begin on the existing five tennis court. So it would be one project in two phases. After that's completed, city staff would install windscreen for, for those courts and a small shaded structure for people to relax and enjoy, and either wait for a game or take some time after their game. As the pedestrian bridge is replaced over County Road 62, that bridge project will bring electrical to that area. One of our goals as a department is to install additional outdoor AEDs, defibrillator devices. We have had some success with the one at Roslin Park that was donated by the Rotary. That is an outdoor climate-controlled AED. We would look to do that as well at that location. And then, longer term, solving the issue for parking and a more permanent restroom at that site. But this would be a platinum-level donation by the Moody Family Foundation. That is our highest level of donation that we do recognize. They are here this evening. The subsequent item that we have right after this, if you do decide to accept the donation, is the actual purchase contract for the construction of that. We would look to, if approved, get going as soon as we can to get these ready and open this year yet.
Oh, all right. Questions from councilmembers. Councilmember Jackson.
So you would be able to get it up and ready this year. So you, your staff has been super busy. The reason I hesitate is like, they're, they're doing Braemar, they're doing Fred Richards. You have the capacity to do that?
Correct. So actually, these, this work could be contracted out. So item 9.3 or 7.3 in your packet, however we move those around tonight, is a request for purchase through the Sarsau contract for Batuminas Roadway to complete that work. We have a tremendous success rate with them on projects. So it would be our observation, but city staff would not be doing the work itself, would be observing and implementing. So we're comfortable with that phase of it.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? No. Member Rizzer.
Just a comment that, and I think this was commented on before, but having the pickleball courts located where they are is just so brilliant, because it's, doesn't bother people with the noise or anything like that. And I do walk over to Roslin Park quite a bit, and it seems like there are always people interested in playing pickleball. So this seems like a very generous gift and a no-brainer to me. That's all I have.
All right. Would either, would either Bruce or Paul Moody care to comment on this matter? Good evening.
10 years ago, I'm Bruce Moody, I'm sorry, and my cousin Paul Moody. 10 years ago, I came to this group, and I'm seeing a lot of new faces. Jim and Scott were around and meeting with us, but your comment, Councilmember Rizzer, is right on, that when we first selected this site, it was all because of noise. That's the biggest problem with pickleball. And when I appeared last time, I said, I'm going to create the biggest problem you have, because it's going to be the most popular game that we have. And those courts are far and away the most-used courts in the city, and we're hoping that this will allow more people to enjoy the game. When we first started, it was old people playing, and now, tons of young people are playing too. And I want to compliment Perry and his staff for their work in helping to get this thing moved forward. Paul and I have a mutual love of our fathers, and that's why this is all happening. We grew up spending our Sundays at Chowan Park and Beard Park, playing a variety of different games. And when I got married in 1982, we played pickleball on my driveway. And so it's a game I, both Melvin and John played that day, and they would have loved it, because it was a great family game that you could have fun. Now, the comment that was made earlier by the mayor was not totally correct, that we've gone from safety to, to pleasure. I've had two ACL problems playing pickleball. So it's generally true. But, and so we, we, this is both a love of, of giving back to the community where we've all lived and have been richly blessed by being here, but it's also, and I think most importantly, a love of our fathers and what they've done for not only this community, for the greater Twin Cities area, in a lot of the different ways that they were involved. So thank you for letting us say a few things. Paul, I didn't need to take off.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Bruce. That was so well said.
Oh, Martine, good. Lucky for you. Yeah, well, Paul Moody, and first of all, I want to thank Bruce for his leadership and vision on this, because we're here because of Bruce and his thoughts on this. But he couldn't be more correct that the fond memories we have growing up here in town and going to Chowan Park, Beard Park, with our, our grandfather, John Moody, and then my dad, Melvin, and Bruce's dad, John, and the memories are great. And to be able to, be able to do this is just a real honor to them, and, and, and something great for the community. And I think it's, I think also maybe Twin Cities Orthopedics is benefiting as well. So thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you, Paul. Thank you, Bruce. All right, well, resolution 2025-55 would accept the donations from the various Moody foundations on behalf of the City of Edina. Is there anyone who cares to make that motion?
Still moved.
I second.
Member Jackson moves. Member Agnew seconds the adoption of resolution 2025-55, which would accept the donation of the various Moody foundations for additional pickleball courts at Roslin Park. Any further discussion? Those in favor of adoption of resolution 2025-55, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried? The resolution's adopted, and we give you our generous thanks. We're going to approve the contract with Batuminas Roadways, I'm sure. And this is just incredible. Thank you. Thank you, and the rest of your families as well, please. All right. See you. And then I need to talk to you, Paul, about a couple of things. So, yeah, all right. All right. All right, let's handle 9.2 where we're at it. That's the request for purchase on the expansion and the upgrades. And let me get to that Batuminas Roadway contract. That was the agreement between the City of Edina and the contractor, Batuminas Roadways, to build these pickleball courts and refurbish everything that's there. Any discussion on that matter, on that contract? Okay, that was item 9.2, and it's showing up in our agenda, just under the form of agreement between City of Edina and contractor for Roslin Park Pickleball Project. Director Vedder, any further comment there?
No, Mayor. Members of the council, I'll just stand if you have any questions.
Any questions for Director Vedder on that? All right. Is there a motion to adopt that, approve the, approve the entry, approve the City of Edina entering into the agreement with the contractor, Batuminas Roadways, for the construction of the Roslin Park pickleball courts?
Still moved.
I second.
Member Jackson moves again. Member Agnew seconds the adoption of the form of agreement between the City of Edina and the contractor, Batuminas Roadways, Inc., for the construction of the Roslin Park pickleball courts. Any further discussion? Those in favor of approving the form of agreement, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. The form of agreement with Batuminas Roadways for the Roslin Park Pickleball Project is approved. All right. Now, let's go back again and go to our own Andrew Cipione, who's coming to us to give us an annual report that's important to be getting, and that's the Pedestrian and Cyclist Safety Fund report for 2024, and what he's thinking about for 2025.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Always a pleasure to be here to talk about the fine work we do with the Pedestrian and Cyclist Safety Fund. For our viewing audience at home, I'll provide a brief recap of what the PACS fund is, go into what our 2024 expenditures were, give an overview of the projects that were constructed in 2024, and then give you a preview of the work we've started in 2025. So the PACS fund, or our Pedestrian and Cyclist Safety Fund, was created in 2012. This is a fund that is created from revenue generated from utility franchise fees, so customers of CenterPoint and Excel Energy. This fund generates about $1.3 million annually, and that money is dedicated exclusively toward improvements in our non-motorized transportation network. So that includes, like what you see in the picture here, sidewalks, bikeways, transit facilities, associated signage and pavement markings. In 2024, we had about $1.6 million available. This includes revenue generated from that franchise fee, in addition to some rollover funds from the previous year. Of that, we spent $1.3, $1.38 million on PACS items. Roughly 50% of that was on new pedestrian and bicycle facilities. About $30,000 was built on maintaining existing pedestrian and bicycle facilities. And then we had kind of a larger amount of final payments on previous projects this year at $230,000, to bringing us to a total construction cost of just under $1 million. Professional services were a little bit higher this year, and I'll go into what those projects involved later on. But professional services were $300,000 last year. Maintenance supplies, kind of miscellaneous costs, were about $10,000. And then my salary and benefits also comes out of the PACS fund. In 2024, the, some of the key projects we built as part of roadway reconstruction projects in the Concord B and C neighborhood, you can see labeled A on the map here, we put in new sidewalks on Concord Avenue and 64th Street. We also put in a new sidewalk on Wooddale Avenue, as well as repaved the Bike Boulevard between Highway 62 and Valley View Road. We also replaced the existing pedestrian flasher at the intersection of Valley View and Concord with a more up-to-date rapid rectangular flashing beacon. In the Southdale B reconstruction neighborhood, we put new sidewalks on Berry Road, Heritage, and 65th Streets. We also put in a number of accessible bus pads in this neighborhood, as this is one of the few residential neighborhoods we have that has transit service. Further north, on France Avenue, we built another segment of that sidewalk that's missing on the east side, from Fuller Street to 57th Street. Further north, on France Avenue, the PACS fund helped pay for a new retaining wall on France and 47th Street. This is adjacent to one of Metro Transit's E-line stations. Network was needed in order to maintain this existing sidewalk that's on the west side of the street. We also paid to replace another pedestrian flasher at 70th and Wooddale with a more modern rapid rectangular flashing beacon. The Roslin Park pedestrian bridge, the design is underway, the preliminary design. Director Milner has provided updates on that. The PACS fund is paying for that preliminary design work. We're, the PACS fund also paid for preliminary design work for the Interlochen Boulevard Trail, which would connect Blake Road to Mirror Lakes Drive. Not shown on the map here, but kind of circled, because it includes a number of locations. The PACS fund helps supplement our sidewalk inspection program. Last year, that work was focused on the southeast quadrant of the city. So this includes funding sidewalk panel replacement, grinding of trip hazards, pedestrian curb ramp replacement, as well as more of those accessible bus pads, which you can see a photograph here of. We installed about 20 of these bus pads throughout this quadrant. Looking to 2025, obviously, one of the big projects going on is the Vernon Avenue Highway 100 interchange. The PACS fund is contributing toward the shared-use paths that'll be on Vernon Avenue as part of that project, in addition to paying for some upgraded biker racks at the Edina Liquor Store. Within the President's A and B reconstruction project, there'll be new shared-use paths on Washington Avenue and Bellmore Lane, in addition to a new sidewalk on Monroe Avenue, or, yeah, Monroe Avenue. The next phase of the France Avenue sidewalk has been substantially completed, actually, from 60th to 62nd. So this connects to the E-line, another E-line station at 62nd Street. We now only have one more segment left of France Avenue between 62nd Street and Highway 62. And then we will have sidewalk on both sides of France all the way through Edina, which is really exciting. Down in the Pentagon Park neighborhood, as part of a scheduled overlay, we performed a road diet on Normandale, Normandale Road and Viking Drive. These streets were previously four lanes in each direction. They're now two lanes, one lane in each direction, or, sorry, there were four lane section, segments, two lanes in each direction. Now they're one lane in each direction with a buffered bike lane. The Roslin Park pedestrian bridge design is continuing this year. Construction's anticipated for 2026. We have ordered additional RRFBs that were approved through the Traffic Safety Committee. One of these is on 62nd Street, adjacent to Pamela Park, this is on the south side of the park. Another one will be installed on Braemar Boulevard, where the new mountain bike trails cross the street. As mentioned earlier today, the Eden Avenue Advanced Flasher for the eastbound direction has been ordered. We are waiting for, for that to be shipped by our vendor, and hoping to get that installed as soon as we can. And then the sidewalk inspection program will again continue to support that work. This year, it's focused on the southwest quadrant. So if you drive around Edina High School, along Valley View or Gleason, and you see all of the new ped ramps that have been installed there, that work was performed by Public Works, but it was funded by the Pedestrian and Cyclist Safety Fund. Another big project that we're working on this year is our Safe and Equitable Mobility Action Plan. This plan is focusing on reducing fatal and serious injury crashes, crashes on all roadways within Edina. The goal of this plan is to identify projects and policies that can help the city in achieving those goals. This work is technically funded through a grant through the Safe Streets and Roads for All program, but because that is a reimbursement grant, the PACS fund is paying for the initial costs until we get that reimbursement from the federal government. I wanted to put a plug in, say there's been a community survey that's been posted on Better Together for the last month or so. That survey actually closes tomorrow. So if anyone wants to provide additional input- So if anyone wants to provide additional input on safety issues that they see on our roadways or suggested improvements, there's a link here to the website, as well as a QR code they can scan that takes them right to that project page. And with that, I'll stand for any questions you may have.
Yes, thank you. Cipione, you did a very good report. Questions from all the members? Paul? Member Richard?
This is about the Roslyn Park Bridge. And I know I have heard from residents who really want to see a stairway go down, and there's a safety issue in that they are thinking about the ramps, and they're thinking about bikes, and they're thinking about, I would feel safer walking up the stairs, and then I'd be at a level approach on the bridge itself, and then I'd go downstairs. But I don't think I'd feel safe going on the ramp because bikes are going to be there. And so that's the first comment. The other comment is people talking about the Roslyn Park Bridge, and there's a tradition, people up there holding signs, protesting, all of that kind of stuff. And with the cladding, that's not really going to be possible. So I don't know if the design could be altered so that at least with the bridge, the cladding would be brought down so that you could continue that. Because it really is a form of community coming together, and the point with both the stairs and the cladding that will make it impossible to be up there with your signs is that we really, you know, need to think about function and use before we think about form. And that's hard for me to say because I'm a retired art historian, but, you know, the best design takes into account function. And I think there's got to be a way to bring that cladding down so that at least the protest can happen. And if there's any way we could figure out how to get those stairs, that'd be great. And I might be addressing this question to the wrong person.
Yeah, I snuck up here. Thank you, Mayor Richard.
Okay. Yes.
Since I'm handling the design of that bridge. So we're meeting with MINDOT now. We're talking cladding. We're talking estimate, cost estimates, and stairs, and we'll be back to you soon to have an update on that. But I would say the council approved a architectural rendering, and that's what we're going forward with, and that will include cladding that's going to block people's view from the bridge. So unless we hear otherwise from the entire council, that is our architectural design we're moving forward with. And it's 30% designed already.
I understand that, but I feel we didn't get enough information when that design was given to us. And it should have been noted the way the bridge is used, and that that function would no longer be available. And I feel like a lot of times, things come to us, and we are tasked with anticipating all these issues that we should be told before we have to make our decision. So I would say that the design we approved, at least from my perspective, needs to be revisited for that part across the bridge. You could just, you know, lower the cladding so that it didn't have to go all the way up.
Thank you.
We've approved your preliminary design at this council level. You're running numbers on it to see what it's going to cost us. You've got some issues with MINDOT. We're looking at the stair issue. As for people who may potentially want to stand up there and engage in free speech, it's a quarter mile from another bridge where they can do the same thing. France has a bridge by the hospital, so.
Correct.
It's, there's another venue close by where they could express their opinions. So I'd say keep going forward until we know what the costs are going to be, and then we can make some decisions.
Yep. I'll be back here shortly after those discussions. And I'll just add one comment to Andrew's presentation where he's mentioned the Roslyn Park Bed Bridge. We're getting all that reimbursed back. You know, we've talked about all the state funding, so PACS is covering it initially, and we're making those requests for payments back to reimburse.
Then the other question I had in my mind is, didn't show up in your report, but I think it's premature, and that is, looking at the sidewalk on Interlochen Boulevard that we've been discussing, that would connect all the way down to Mirror Lakes, I guess, and try to get that done before 2029. Was that the date?
Yes. You've approved a design, preliminary design contract at a recent council meeting. We have a kick-up meeting next week with an anticipated construction, full street reconstruction, including a wide sidewalk and trail like we did towards Hopkins on Blake, bike lanes, and then we've got water systems, and all that is scheduled for construction in 2027.
Thank you.
And we're working with the Interlochen Country Club because they own a big portion of that property adjacent to that project.
We're making steady progress on this non-motorized system of ours, and that's good to see. That franchise fee's really been helpful on that.
It has.
I don't know if you have any supplemental comment.
No, yeah, the franchise fee has been very helpful, and I'll also add that staff does look for external opportunities for funding. We look for, we try to apply for as many grants as we can, such as the Safe Streets and Roads for All Grant. We've also been successful in acquiring Safe Routes to School Grants through the state of Minnesota. So we're constantly looking for supplemental sources of funding so we can continue to expand our multimodal network.
And the PACS fund typically provides that required match. That's why we're so successful in getting those dollars, is because we have a dedicated funding source we can use as a match with those grants.
Terrific. All right. Well, thank you for that report.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director Milner, too. All right. That concludes the Special Recognitions and Presentations portion of the agenda. We're going to turn to public hearings. We've got two public hearing-related matters this evening, and one, Addison Lewis has, our Community Development Coordinator, and on that matter, he's suggesting that we leave the hearing open until noon on Sunday, July 27, and continue the action to the August 6, 2025 City Council Meeting. And on the other matter, I think Director Milner has that, and he's thinking that we could potentially take action yet this evening on that matter. But first, we'll go to Addison Lewis, our Community Development Coordinator, to talk about this particular public hearing and the proposed subdivision and variances, potential variances at 316 Madison Avenue.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. This is a request for subdivision with variances at 316 Madison Avenue. The subject property is located in the President's Neighborhood in the R1 Zoning District in northwest Edina. The property currently contains a single-family home with a detached garage. The applicant is proposing to subdivide the property into two lots for the purpose of constructing a new home on the southern lot. The applicant, Homes Within Reach, is a nonprofit, community-based organization that creates and preserves affordable homeownership opportunities for working households in suburban Hennepin County. They are a partner organization of the city for our Affordable Ownership Preservation Program. They help families earning less than 80% area median income to become homeowners by acquiring, remodeling, and selling properties through a community land trust model. This means that the clients they work with purchase the home and lease the land at a nominal fee, which reduces the mortgage, down payment, and closing costs. So that would be the case with both the proposed home and the existing home that's on this property. They would both be sold to income-qualified buyers, and they would lease the land from Homes Within Reach to ensure that the property remains affordable in the long term. So with the proposal, it involves the following requests. So preliminary and final plat to replat the property into two lots. Variance to allow lot area of 5,988 square feet and 6,004 square feet where 9,000 square feet is required. Variance to allow lot width of 45.96 feet for both lots where 75 feet is required, and a variance to allow lot depth of 130.27 feet for one of the lots where 130.57 feet is required. So here's a look at the property as it is today. So the home, the white home there on the right, is the existing home on 316 Madison. And then the proposed home would be constructed just to the left of that, in that space there. There's just another look from the other side, from the front, and then a photo from the rear of the property from the alley. So here's the proposed survey showing how they could fit a new home on the southern lot without the need for any variances. Again, there's the existing home on the northern lot there. Again, the dimensions of the lot would be about 46 feet wide by 130 feet deep. They've also provided some elevations showing what the new home would look like, though I will just note that kind of the design of the new home isn't really within the scope of what we're considering here tonight. It's really just the plat and also those variances to the dimensions of the lot. So here's a table that shows you those standards for lot area, lot width, and depth, and how Lot 1 and Lot 2 of the proposed plat compare to those standards. So again, the minimum lot area is 9,000 square feet, and so both Lot 1 and Lot 2 would require variances at 6,004 square feet and 5,988 square feet. The minimum lot width, again, 75 feet. Both lots would be 45.96 feet in width. And then for lot depth, the default standard is actually 120 feet. However, if the median of all lots within 500 feet is greater than that, then the standard becomes the median. So in this case, it's 130.57 feet. You see that Lot 1 is just over that, and then Lot 2 is just under, so that requires a variance as well. So Minnesota statutes in Section 3698 of the Edina zoning ordinance require that a variance shall not be granted unless the following findings are made. The variance would be in harmony with the general purposes and intent of the ordinance. The variance would be consistent with the comprehensive plan. There are practical difficulties in complying with the ordinance. The term "practical difficulties" means the following. One, the property owner proposes to use the property in a reasonable manner not permitted by the zoning ordinance. Two, the plight of the landowner is due to circumstances unique to the property not created by the landowner. And three, the variance, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the locality. So I've provided some analysis in the staff report, but I'll just give you kind of a brief overview of the staff findings here. So first, the lots in the neighborhood were platted prior to Edina's existing standards for lot area, width, and depth. All of the lots in the original West Minneapolis Heights plat were approximately 130 feet deep by 46 feet wide, which is what's being proposed here by the applicant. The property was originally platted as two lots and then combined, so the proposed plat would reestablish the original lot sizes. 12 of the 18 other properties on the block have approximately the same dimensions as those being proposed. So the minimum lot standards do not reflect the existing characteristics of the neighborhood. So you can see all the lots in blue. Again, 12 out of the 18 other properties on this block are approximately the same dimensions, again, 46 by 130, give or take a foot here, as what's being proposed. The requests would also advance the following comprehensive plan goals. So from the Land Use Chapter, Goal 1 is encourage infill and redevelopment that optimizes use of city infrastructure, complement community character, and respond to needs at all stages of life. And then in the Housing Chapter, Goal 2 is encourage the development and maintenance of a range of housing options affordable to residents at all income levels and life stages, promote owner-occupied units over rental units when providing affordable housing. And then Goal 4, support the development of a wide range of housing options to meet the diverse needs of and preferences of the existing and future Edina community, retain and expand housing ownership options while also supporting a balance between ownership and rental households. So on June 25, the Planning Commission voted unanimously 9-0 to recommend approval of the requested subdivision and variances. So tonight, staff recommendation is to hold a public hearing and then close the public hearing at noon on Sunday, July 27, 2025, and continue action to the August 6 meeting. And then when we come back on August 6, staff would be recommending approval of the subdivision and variances, subject to the conditions on the screen and in your staff reports. And with that, be happy to take any questions. I think the applicant is here. Maybe not. They're not here this evening.
They're not here. Okay. I was going to ask you that. Questions for Mr. Lewis? Is this a for-sale proposition?
Yes.
Are they going to retain the land and sell the house?
Yep.
Or sell the whole thing?
Homes Within Reach retains the land, and so they're just selling the structure, which makes it more affordable to the buyer. And if you have more questions on that, maybe Stephanie Hawkinson could answer more of that.
All right. Other questions from council members at this point in time? Yes. Councilmember Jackson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So with the conditions that you listed, are those, those were staff-recommended conditions, or did the Planning Commission add any conditions when they reviewed this?
Those were the staff-recommended conditions. The Planning Commission did not add any conditions.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Other questions at this point in time for Mr. Lewis? Okay. All right. Let's, we don't have anybody here from the applicant. Let's treat this as it is, a public hearing, and open it up for public testimony. And if there's anyone here that wishes to testify regarding this matter, you'll have three minutes, and you'll get a yellow light. You'll have 30 seconds left to wrap up your comments, and please feel free to come forward and comment with respect to this matter.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Steve Brown. I live at 5528 Halifax Avenue. I'm here tonight to support this project. I urge you to vote to support this project at your August 6 meeting. When I testified at the Planning Commission, I started by saying I thought this was a slam dunk. The ensuing thoughtful conversation showed me that that was not true, but it was a good thoughtful discussion. For that reason, I'm going to list what I believe are the five most compelling reasons for you to support this project. First, this lot split request is similar to other lot split requests that you previously approved. You did so because the majority of the neighboring lots were of similar size. In this case, 2/3 of the neighboring lots are similar in size, and you saw the slide, 12 out of 18. So this is very consistent with what you previously have approved. Second, all the lots in this neighborhood, and you saw a very good map that I hadn't seen before, were originally planted with approximately the same dimensions. Ironically, you could make the argument that this project supports the original character of this neighborhood. This project is consistent with the comprehensive plan housing goals, especially those for affordable ownership housing. Fourth, the developer, Homes Within Reach, is well-known to you. They're doing a number of different projects in Edina already. They have a strong track record for effective partnership with the city, and they are doing permanently affordable ownership homes, projects throughout the city. And I think everyone seems to be very pleased with the work that's being done. I'm doing work with them for Habitat for Humanity, and those projects seem to be going very well, and they're certainly selling. Fifth, many studies have shown that the city needs more affordable ownership housing. This project is a great way to take one more step forward in satisfying that need. So for these five reasons, I urge you to support this project tonight, and I hope you'll vote in favor of this project at your August 6 meeting. Thank you very much for listening.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Brown. Anyone else wish to testify regarding this matter? Seeing no one coming forward and hearing nothing, I'll turn to Director Bennerott to see if we have anybody online who wishes to testify.
We do not, sir.
All right. Okay. Did the comments from Mr. Brown precipitate any questions from council members? Member Richard?
Since Director Hawkinson is here, just a real quick summary of why we can be assured that this project will be an affordable project, just basic for the community.
Homes Within Reach, Mayor, council members, Homes Within Reach, that is their mission. That is what they do. They don't create market-rate housing. It is a community land trust by charter. So they own the land beneath the home, and then they enter into a 99-year ground lease with the buyer of the home. There's a formula within the ground lease that dictates how much the subsequent sale can be for, to keep the homes actually increasingly affordable over time.
Thank you. That's all I really wanted. Appreciate that.
Good. Thank you. Thanks for being with us, Ms. Hawkinson. All right. Well, the staff is recommending that we close the public hearing in this matter at noon on Sunday, July 27, 2025, and continue the action to the August 6, 2025 City Council Meeting. Is there a motion of that effect by one of my colleagues?
Still moved.
Member Jackson moves. Member Pierce seconds the adoption of the motion stated to close the public hearing in this matter at noon on July 27, 2025, and continue the action to the August 6, 2025 City Council Meeting. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the motion stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. Motion's adopted. This matter will be taken up again on August 6, 2025, at our regular City Council Meeting. People can certainly call or write in and provide information through the city website until Sunday, the end of business, end of the day on Sunday, July 27, 2025. And the next public hearing matter, Chad Milner, our Engineering Director, has this matter and... matter, and that is a potential vacation of a right-of-way easement at 4015 Inglewood Avenue. Turn now to Director Milner.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Yes, it is located at Kelvin Christian School in the Morningside neighborhood. So this is the request. These are the existing easements we're requesting to vacate. As part of the Morningside Flood Infrastructure Project, we created, we moved some pipes around, and we created new easements. They've already dedicated the new easements, and they're filed with the county. So this was the promise that if we work through that agreement, we would ask to vacate these existing easements. So these are clear and free. We don't need them. We have no concerns vacating them. Like I mentioned, the new ones are already filed with the county, and the private utility companies have no concern. And we also didn't receive any comments on Better Together as part of our public engagement. So we are recommending that we vacate these easements and approve Resolution 2025-56. I'd be happy to stand for any questions.
Questions for Director Milner on this matter? Nothing but silence from the council. Standby, standby. This is a public hearing matter. I'm going to open it up for public testimony. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to testify regarding this proposed vacation? All right. Hearing nothing, seeing no one coming forward. Do we have anybody online?
We do not yet have anyone online, but because there is a brief delay in the broadcast, I would recommend we wait about one minute before moving forward. That gives people time to call in if they're still trying to punch in all of those numbers. My clock shows that it's 8:51, so I will come back to you at 8:52 or when I have a caller, whichever's first.
Very good.
It is now 8:52, and I still don't have a caller, so I think it's safe to move forward with your agenda.
Thank you, Director Bennerott. Director Milner has recommended that we adopt by resolution the vacation of the right-of-way easement at 4015 Inglewood Avenue in Edina. Is there a motion to close the public hearing in this matter?
So moved.
Second.
Member Jackson moves. Member Pierce seconds the motion to close the public hearing in this matter. Any further discussion on that matter? All those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, posed, carried. The public hearing is closed, and the motion, as I indicated, is to approve Resolution 2025-56, which would vacate the right-of-way easement at 4015 Inglewood Avenue. Is there a motion of that effect?
So moved.
Second.
Member Jackson moves. Member Pierce seconds the adoption of Resolution 2025-56, which vacates the right-of-way easement at 4015 Inglewood Avenue. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of Resolution 2025-56, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, posed, carried. Resolution 2025-56 is adopted.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director Milner. And then we're moving past matters that we previously handled with the Moody Family Foundations. And we're moving on now to a portion of the agenda that involves a comprehensive, potential comprehensive plan amendment, preliminary plat and site plan at 5516 Vernon Avenue. And Director Teague has this matter. Oh, yeah, the Chauvin Park matter.
The revised addition, the revised agenda has 9.1 next.
Yeah, I was looking at the wrong agenda. Okay, we got the Chauvin Park. Excuse me. We've got three agendas going here. Yeah, we're picking up on, we're picking up on receiving the petition for stop signs in the Chauvin Park neighborhood. That was 9.1. And I want to go back to, on the copy I've got here, we had the petition for stop signs in Chauvin Park neighborhood, it was item 6.17. Is this a revised agenda? Okay, all right. All right, so next we've got the, so I was looking at the wrong agenda. Excuse me. The petition for stop signs in the Chauvin Park neighborhood. Thank you, Clerk Allison, for making that rapid change in the, in the agenda. So typically, we just accept the petition and then refer it to engineering for discussion. But we have a suggestion that, from the neighborhood, that we should just act on this matter. And I'm wondering if we should, we could have your input. I mean, their argument is with the petition that you've looked at this several times and come to the conclusion that what they're recommending isn't consistent with what would drive the data. And as we heard upstairs, they're talking about the lived experience maybe being different than the data-driven experience. And so I think getting your thoughts on, on accepting the petition, which we will do, and referring it as opposed to acting on it tonight would be important for this council to consider.
Thank you, Mayor. As part of what was submitted, there's a table that's a summary of requests for stop signs at these four intersections. In that table, you can see of the four that are requested, there's one that was last reviewed in 2021, or the last request we had was 2021. And there's another one, 57th and Zenith, where the last request we had was 2014. So there are others that we did receive requests for this year that we denied. However, for those older requests, we would really like the opportunity to go back and review sightline conditions, review changes, potential changes in traffic volumes that may, may result in different outcomes than what we previously have recommended.
Thoughts from council members? Yes. Member Agnew.
Thank you, and thank you for all the work that you've done on this to date. I know that there has been a lot of, a lot of review and a lot of moving parts. This is one of those projects that I, I want to see move forward in some shape or fashion. I think that there's a lot of input from the community that they want to see the stop signs there. I think we had some good discussion up in the work group of really honoring the lived experiences of those within our community and understanding that. And so I, speaking to the rest of the council, I'm very comfortable if we want to, you know, direct staff to come back and give us the refined proposal of where these stop signs should go. One of the intersections wanted all four, whereas the other three, it was two. So some of that, I won't even say negotiation, or just like refinement of what is the ultimate plan, I think makes sense to have staff go back and reevaluate. But I want to also say that I really do support stop signs for this neighborhood, and so want to see, rather than, you know, no changes recommended, I want to see what is the recommended treatment that hopefully will include stop signs. So that's where my head's at right now.
Thank you. Others? Other thoughts? Councilmember Jackson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So in their petition, they said there have been 14 requests since 2014. You're telling me that there were two and then several this year. Please explain the difference.
Apologies. So I'm, of the four intersections that, where this petition is requesting stop signs, at one of those intersections, the last request we received was in 2014. At one of those intersections, the last request we received was in 2021. But between all four intersections, that's where that 14 requests in total in the last 10 years, that's where that came from.
Okay, thank you. I think I understand that. But I'll say, you know, when I ran in 2020, I got a pretty stern talking to about this neighborhood and how dangerous it is. If they've requested 14 times in the last 11 years, I think this is something that needs to be done. That's a pretty significant data. I know that the traffic data doesn't support it, but I want to see this happen. And I think, you know, Member Agnew's idea of refining it is a good one, but I want some stop signs there because these people are different over time, and yet the complaint is the same. The neighbors understand it, but it's, other outsiders use the neighborhood, and it's unsafe, partly because it's near Minneapolis, has a different pattern of stop signs and everything than we do, but also just they're unfamiliar with the neighborhood. So it's a safety concern. It's been a safety concern for a long time, and I want to see something happen. And I'd like to see something maybe at our next meeting, where you come forward and say, this is the configuration that will help the most. But even, you know, I think that we need to act on this.
Member, excuse me, Member Rissler?
I agree with both Members Agnew and Member Jackson, and particularly was pleased to hear the request that this be brought back at our next meeting because I think time is really important. It's summer, a lot of changes have happened with France Avenue, and we need to do something. So, thank you.
Councilmember Pierce?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So I agree with my colleagues. I think one of the points that, in particular, that you made, Member Jackson, different people, same outcome. And that, that's, I like that. That's definitely a data point, whenever that is the case. I think we should take action. However, we do have to be process honoring. And so upstairs, I talked about, we were applying a standard, and that standard is saying likely no action or limited action. So I think we actually have to change both things so that when another community comes forward with a similar challenge, then we're not going back and applying a different standard. And then in this neighborhood, for whatever reason, and there are valid reasons, lots of emails, right, we walk the community, all of those are valid reasons, but we do have to make sure we're able to consistently apply a standard. So if, when you come back, I think we need to at least try to have some view of how we are going to think about applying, in this case, a different standard perhaps than what state statute, or what the state standard is in these cases. And I'd actually like to hear both of those things.
So, oh, go ahead.
Yeah, so go ahead, and then we'll go to Councilmember Jackson.
I think we have to be careful. I have a license in engineering to put forward recommendations to you. And I've talked about, these things might be less safe to add stop signs. So I got a concern that I might be requesting or putting in stuff that's less safe because now you have controls and people think the other's stopping, and they're not. And the industry says this is not a safer method to do it. So I have concerns with that. There has been examples where council has override our professional opinion and told us just to put stop signs in. I feel like this may be the case because I don't think we're going to come back and recommend sidewalk, or stop signs in this case. To speak to, come up with a different standard, that's not happening in a couple of weeks or something. That's a long-term process that we have to review industry standards, see what other methods might be used, some of those things. So I don't think we can just come back next meeting in August and have that process figured out for you. That's a long-term thing that we would have to look at. So I guess from my standpoint, I don't think we're going to get to recommending sidewalk or stop signs. And if the council really wants to do it, I think they got to direct us to do that like we did on, we had one on Kellogg, Mayor, you remember that? You just directed us to do it. Still don't like that stop sign because I think there's also a cost and a maintenance to all these signs. If we start putting them up in every intersection, your budget is going to be much different with sign maintenance and operations. So we got to keep that in mind, too. So just some comments.
Councilmember Pierce. Then we'll go back to Councilmember Jackson. It was a good discussion.
So again, I was trying to help. I think it's a, we, I think the last thing we want to do is to set a precedent that we're doing another one-off. And so to whatever extent, and if that means in our work plan, we're going to say, all right, perhaps we're going to do these stop signs as a one-off. But in our work plan, we're going to look at the standard, we're going to come back at the appropriate time and say, this is how we are now going to use a standard to judge safety in Edina when it comes to stop signs, right? Or however you want to word that. I think we need both of those things. If we don't have that, we are just going to continue to perhaps get one-offs. And while petitions are part of the democratic process, I just don't know that that should be, if a neighborhood does 300 petitions, they get what they, what they believe is the best thing to do. And so in those cases, I'd like for us to refine whatever the outcome is for this, but then put forth a plan in place to assess that, if that standard needs to be different in Edina. And then let us make the call on whether, yes, we want that to be the new standard for our city. To me, that's a better position for you, for you guys to be, for staff to be in, in the long run, as opposed to just doing a one-off.
Yeah, I was just making sure, short-term, probably the standard, maybe with the CMAP, we could have our professional people we've hired that are looking at safety and transportation and all this stuff, that they could review this process with us over the next eight months while we work on that CMAP project, so.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yeah, so I think you may have answered my question, and that is, the council can always override this. But in terms of a standard, just sort of if we're going to do that, if there are standards for an appeal or to us, the appeal to us and the standards that we would look at are standards for a variance. So we've got the rule, we've got the recommendation, but I have to say, going back to 2014, 14 requests, there's something wrong here. And I don't know how we resolve that, but I think it needs, it's been the experience of this neighborhood that this is, these are dangerous intersections, and they're frightened, their kids are getting scared when they're out walking around because strangers come through, and they come through fast. And, and I just, I, we have to, it's not going away. And so if we had a standard for, you know, either variance, appeal, whatever you want to say, but if, to help us guide, if we don't agree with that, what are the three factors that we should look at? Something like that. And so in your research, regardless of how we decide this, that might be sort of not changing the safety standards, but these, if you want to override us, you should consider these things. I don't know.
Thank you, Member Jackson. Councilmember Agnew?
To build off of what Member Jackson was just saying, too, and I think Director Milner, you kind of mentioned this, and I don't want to put you on the spot to answer this right now, so I'm saying, when you come back, if you could also provide a little bit more information around what you had said previously around it potentially being less safe to introduce stop signs into these intersections, I want to dig into that and understand that a little bit more. So if you could come prepared to help educate me and the rest of the council, I think that would be helpful.
Okay.
Yeah, for, for me, I get the fact that you don't want to make a recommendation relative to what the neighbors are proposing based on the standards that you have as an engineer. So we don't, we don't want to have you modify those standards to accommodate a lived experience, but for us, it may be a different decision.
Yep.
And, and so you put forth your best decision, but, but I don't think any of us want to, well, we, we understand you can't come back in two weeks, that makes some sense. We don't want to, we don't want you to come back in two months either. I mean, I think if we had a month to think about this, that should be enough time. And I think, I think we're going to find that the council's going to be sensitive to the lived experience over there that a lot of us have experienced that have walked over there over the years in the neighborhood and experienced from being over there visiting people. I just think, I think they're on the right track here, but I'm also sensitive and deferential to the standards that you apply, all of you, both of you apply as professionals. So let's, let's receive, I'd say, I'd say, let's receive the petition for the stop signs from the Chauvin Park neighborhood and forward it to staff for consideration and report back to us in a month, second meeting in August.
I would, I would frame that a couple of weeks later so we have the opportunity to go in front of the Traffic Safety Committee in August.
Okay, timing wise, we'd understand that, too.
Meeting in September would be beneficial if we could do that.
All right. First meeting in September? First meeting in September?
We'll bring... We'll bring.
So, motion would be to receive the petition for stop signs in the Chauvin Park neighborhood, from the Chauvin Park neighborhood itself, forward it to the Engineering Department for consideration and reconsider the matter, or consider the matter at the first meeting in September, which is September 2nd. Twenty twenty-five. Is there a motion of that effect?
Still moved.
Member Jackson moves.
Second.
Member Pierce seconds the motion as stated. Any further discussion? Those in favor of adoption of the motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. Motion's adopted. Now, we'll move on to Director Teague. I found the right, thanks to Member Pierce and digging a little bit here, I found my third or fourth agenda here, so go ahead.
All right. Thank you, Mayor, members of council. This is the project located on Vernon Avenue. The proposal is to tear down the existing single-family home on the site and build two duplexes. You held a public hearing on June 17th. There was, there's been a large amount of feedback on Better Together, close to 80 responses. Most were opposed, some of the issues that have been cited and same that cited at the public hearing in relation to concerns over traffic, too much density, setting a precedent, protecting the existing character of the neighborhood. There were several that were in favor that would, this would provide missing middle, not necessarily in the affordable, affordable housing sense, but provides some alternative housing for Edina. They believe that it fits the neighborhood and traffic they didn't see as an issue, especially being located on an arterial roadway. The specific request this evening is for a comprehensive plan amendment to re-guide the site from low-density residential to low-density attached residential. There's a rezoning and site plan. The rezoning is from R1 to PRD2. The project would be code compliant with the PRD2 standards, and there's also an ordinance amendment for the rezoning. This is one that the City Council has complete discretion to approve or deny, so we've provided resolutions to that effect, both approval and denial in your packet. The Planning Commission vote on this one was six to two for approval. Because of the comprehensive plan amendment, this does take four votes of the City Council to pass. So with that, we would, staff again, and the Planning Commission are recommending approval. We would recommend that you divide this into three separate motions. The first would be for the comprehensive plan amendment. The second would be for the rezoning and site plan, and then the third for the ordinance amendment. And we would suggest that if the first two items pass, that you would waive second reading of the ordinance amendment. The development team is here to answer any questions that you may have. They've provided some additional information that was requested at the last City Council meeting in regard to some of their projects, and they're here to answer any questions you may have on that. So with that, I'll turn it over to the City Council for your discussion and decision.
And the staff recommendation was?
For approval also.
For approval also. Mr. Crockett, Mr. Fletcher, Mr. Kennedy, thanks for being here, your whole team. Missing one of you here from the agenda, so my apologies. Let's go to Member Rissler.
I do have questions for staff, and if we could get the zoning map up so we can see what we're looking at. On Better Together, and then this also came up in the public hearing, it was noted that what we're doing is creating a situation where we have one single parcel changed from R1 to R2, and it would be surrounded entirely by R1. And as a City Council person and also somebody who has seen similar projects like this, and I'm thinking about the Key site, you know, where we talked about this situation with zoning, where you have one little parcel surrounded by different uses. I think that's really troubling and we're being asked to change our comprehensive plan for this specific scenario. Okay? And for me, that is a really big deal, okay? As I've done reading on some of the problems with this situation, one of the things that comes up is that if you're going to do this kind of zoning, you need to make the case that there is a public benefit. And the public benefit that we have been told is that it's bringing in more townhomes, okay? These are going to be expensive townhomes in the million-dollar range. There's going to be four of them clustered together along a county minor arterial, and it really makes me think of the Valley View situation, where we have four expensive townhomes. They've been on the market for 405 days and only recently, this month, has one of them actually been occupied. So I do have questions about whether this is a prudent financial decision or investment. The other thing, though, is we are removing a home that was sold for, in the low $500,000, and that is considered to be affordable, much more affordable. And as we look at our comprehensive plan, as we look at the goals that Met Council has set for us, maintaining naturally occurring affordable housing is one of those goals. And so swapping out a rare example of this and bringing in market-rate houses that are in the million-dollar range is problematic. Another, I think, detriment to the public, we've heard about heritage oak trees that are going to have to be removed from the site. I think this opens the door for past projects that have been rejected, including the most recent Key site proposal and also Grandview Lane, remember? There was that argument that a developer wanted to change R2 to R3, and we talked about how, you know, it shouldn't just be done for that one site. It should be an area that is studied. It should be an area of change. There should be some kind of study involved. And what we're going to do in this situation, and I want, you know, people to envision that parcel right below Highland School, just that one single parcel, is going to be filled with the crosshatching that represents R2, and it's just going to stand alone. I don't think this is a prudent way of doing development. I do think it sheds a lot of doubt on our process, and especially as we have been consistently trying to find ways to create more affordable housing projects, this is not the way to go. And yes, it is large enough that it would allow for two double-dwelling units. However, there are parcels in the area that are 15,000 square feet, so you could build and be within the specific requirements to put in one double-dwelling unit. And so as I think about this, and I think about just bringing in that one tiny little spot of R2, I am very concerned about that. And I want to apologize to the neighbors because when I was just a resident, not even a candidate, I was very concerned about how zoning was being done. And, you know, seeing things in my neighborhood, like a one-acre site to the west of Kellogg, and then you cross the street, you went past a building, and there was a .27-acre site. And staff was combining those sites and saying that a 1.27-acre site existed. And that was used to justify advancing a project that would have put 13 units on a .27-acre triangularly shaped lot. That didn't happen, but what we ended up with on an 11,000-square-foot lot, not even big enough for one double-dwelling unit, were two double-dwelling units. And it's in the commercial zone. It's not even in the residential, it's not residentially zoned, so there shouldn't be residential use on the first floor or the basement. And so when I first saw this project, I was thinking, oh my goodness, it meets the standards. It doesn't require any variances or anything like that, but the big picture is, it doesn't. It requires this huge act on our part to amend our comprehensive plan. And as you look at the rest of the zoning map, you know, just think about all these areas, these larger parcels, and it really opens up. It's not just about this little situation, but it is creating a precedent, okay? And yes, I realize that doesn't mean we're obligated to do it elsewhere, but it is a precedent, you know? And so looking in other parts of Edina, could there be three double-dwelling units? Could there be, you know, and, and what we've heard, I really appreciated, you know, how we had the lot division before us and we were talking about neighborhood character, and we were talking about affordability and consistency and all those really great things. And I think, to be fair, we need to be consistent in how we're looking at this. So I do have a lot of concerns about, you know, the compreh, and, you know, this could be, when we do the comprehensive plan, and if you go through and you read it and you look at the goals for land use and everything, it talks about how units per acre should not be the only measure used to determine whether a certain development is appropriate for a site or a neighborhood. It should also be about FAR, it should be about the size and just how it compares to the neighborhood character. I've said a lot, I'm going to stop, but those are my high-level concerns.
Thank you, Member Rissler. Does anyone else, it seems to me that there's an inference that Member Rissler is going to vote not to approve a comprehensive plan amendment. Let me ask Director Teague again. Is this, is a, would a decision to rezone the property be consistent with the city's comprehensive plan?
As the site is currently designated, it would not. It requires the comprehensive plan amendment for the site.
That's why we're talking about making the amendment.
Right.
Are others thinking that this doesn't meet the standards for comprehensive plan amendment? Because we need a four-fist vote. Okay, let's just go to comments from other council members then. And anyone care to lead off? Member Jackson?
So, at the League of Minnesota Cities Conference, we, I talked with the League's housing lobbyist, and we've been working a lot at the Capitol to retain our power to affect zoning. And I think it's really important to remember that the whole purpose of zoning is about the health and safety of the community, okay? In all the discussion and all of the complaints, I have not heard anything that indicated that this would not be a safe or healthy development. So everything else after that, to me, is very secondary. It's about health and safety, and that's why we have the power of zoning, so that we have sufficient sewer capacity, so that there, the air can move, so that the streets aren't overwhelmed with trucks where it's a residential neighborhood, things like that. And so at the very basic level, it meets health and safety requirements, and that's why we have zoning laws. Period, end of sentence. And then we use those for a lot of reasons on top of that, but that's why we have them. Every study that we have done since 2015 on housing in this city has called for a variety of housing. And it isn't just affordable versus expensive, it's choices. And that is what is the fundamental basis of our housing chapter in our comprehensive plan. So while technically, this particular parcel doesn't fit with our comprehensive plan, it very much fits with the housing chapter in the comprehensive plan and with the subsequent Housing Task Force study that was done. And so for that reason, and for that reason alone, I would approve it. But then we also look at Vernon. Vernon is not a single-family street. It has condominiums, it has townhomes, it has duplexes, and it has single-family homes. It is a street with a lot of variety, it's a county highway. This isn't a little cul-de-sac, and it's not going to change the nature of a cul-de-sac. This is a county highway, it fits very well with the variety of housing that's on Vernon. And then finally, we had a study done with the students at the Humphrey Institute, looking at the climate issues. And that, they recommended as their number-one recommendation to increase density along Vernon so that we can encourage bus service to come back to this area. Where I'm told that, Mr. Lewis told us at the question before, that Metro Transit is going to bring back commuter buses at certain times, but there are people who live on Vernon now who don't drive. And so they would like to be able to, they used to be able to take the bus, they can't take the bus anymore. And if we can look at this in the future, we're coming up with a new comprehensive plan, and this is something I would advocate, that all of Vernon be at a higher density level so that we can have that bus service and help reduce our vehicle miles traveled in the city, which is one of my top priorities, is to address climate change. So we've been outside, back of my throat's been burning all week. I think everybody else here can say that their throat has been burning because of the forest fires. Climate change is real, we have to address that, and one of the most important ways we're going to address that is to reduce vehicle miles traveled. So we're going to have four beautiful new homes. I went and visited these developers, one of their homes they're building in Edina, they built a very high-quality product. So it'll be a nice house, no question about health and safety with this building. The studies, I'll back it up, that we've been doing for 10 years now. It looks to the future and to the future of our city, both for climate reasons and for housing variety reasons, and so I strongly support this.
All right, good. Thank you for those comments. Councilmember Pierce.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and Councilmember Jackson. You covered, I think, all of the points that I was going to make. And so I, so I do have two questions, though, well, maybe one statement and then one question for the developers. I actually live in the neighborhood, and so when I walk my dog, I walk behind where this house is because I, I walk my dog through Highlands, right? And so I'm just around the corner from where this property is. And so I do think it's a good project for many other reasons that Member Jackson gave. But one question for the developers, the, when you guys were here before, we talked about price point. And so can you speak to price point? Because I do think that in Edina, we are, our median home value in six or so years is projected to be a little over a million dollars. And so the question I have is, I think this could be a slam dunk depending on what the price point is that you're targeting for these. I don't know that that would change the way I would vote. However, I am curious what your price point is going to be. Thank you.
How's everybody doing? Good evening. Energy might be a little low. I'm usually in bed about like 8:30, so I'm trying to stay awake right now. But it's a great question as far as the price point.
Would you give us your name, too, please?
Rashad. Rashad Kendi.
Thank you.
Benet's Properties.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy.
Yes, sir, yeah. Thank you. As far as the question to the price point, you know, right now, we are targeting around that million price point, you know, originally coming into it, we were hoping to be lower than that, quite a bit lower than that, but as we start developing the plans, engaging with our trade professionals, excavation, concrete, lumber yards, things of that nature, engineers, you know, slowly start creeping up. You know, our goal's to stay under, you know, at the same time, you know, we want to be honest about kind of where prices are at, you know, tariffs, things changing quickly. So that's basically where we're at and what we're aiming to do, I mean, as far as being under that price point as well. Yep.
Thank you, gentlemen. You go ahead and sit down, we'll stand by. We'll go back to conversation here.
Thank you. And thank you for, for other council members and their thoughts on this project. I know that with this project, I was initially, I think, pretty excited about it, and I know that we've had some conversations, and, and some of the aspects of it that were most exciting to me were incrementally increasing density, especially along this corridor in particular, as well as what the initial price point was going to be. When we saw this last time now, and you just kind of reflected on it, too, price point is a bit higher. I think, I don't remember exactly, it was like the 700, 800 range, I think, previously, which, I mean, that could potentially- which, I mean, that could potentially be, you know, 25 to 30% increase, right, that we're looking at for a price point. I think there are some other changes that I'm not necessarily excited about, and one of those is we increased the overall size, and I'm looking at kind of the treescape, right? We see the number of trees that will be removed for this project. And so, I say all of that to say, it's not a perfect project. But I don't know how many perfect projects we get as a city council, right? We're always needing to weigh the pros and the cons, and what are the benefits, and what are, what are some of the aspects that we don't like? So for me, one of the aspects that I don't like is the number of trees, some of those larger trees that we'll be losing. That's also been a priority, as we've been looking at just our overall tree canopy, and what are we doing to combat the climate change and all of that. I don't love the price point. I do wish it were closer to, I don't even know if I would say affordable, maybe more attainable, especially in Edina with where we're at right now with, as Member Pierce was saying, the average going to be towards a million in just a handful of years. And at the same time, I also think, though, what, what else would I want to see on this site? Right? And I think, you know, it is always important for us to consider today, there is a one, a single house there. It was for sale, and someone bought it, and developer bought it. And I do support the continued evolution of the land and what we're doing with the property across the community. And so then when I look at that one, and I think Member Risher might have made this comment, like potentially it could be two units there, or is it going to be what we're looking at right now is four units? And when I think about all of the other aspects or the concerns that I've heard from the neighborhood, I don't think that there's a meaningful difference in two units compared to four units when we think about incrementally increasing density. I think that that is a goal that I have because of climate change and because of the affordability of housing and all these other factors that we also have set are a priority for the community. And so I know I'm kind of like going back and forth, and everyone's like, wow, how's she going to vote? Like I said, this isn't a perfect project, but I don't know that we're ever going to get perfection out of the projects that come before us. I do support, you know, continued redevelopment. I do support bringing in additional units of housing. I really wish they were a lower price point. We've talked about that. That would be the one thing that I think, as Member Pierce was saying, would make this a slam dunk for me. But that's, that's where my thoughts are at right now.
Thank you. Everything that we've had in terms of testimony coming in from the public, whether it's two better together or here in person, all of these, I would say legitimate concerns that people have and worries that they have about traffic and property values, and all, all very understandable. And I think important for all of us, and I think we just, we do this on a regular basis because of how this council is constructed, and the people that are on it are sensitive to those, those concerns. And for us, it, and it's a, our responsibility is to kind of embrace those concerns, but also think about whether or not they should be worrying so much, to be, I guess would be one way to put it, because of our experience that we have up here. And, and when I think about people worrying about property values, potential diminution of property values, because you're going to have a four-unit townhouse project next to a single-family neighborhood, actually covering in terms of lot coverage, about the same as what they cover to, on Goyalane. I mean, they kind of match up from a density standpoint. So that got me thinking about, well, we put, I think, eight townhouses over behind Wells Fargo, right next to single-family homes, right next to them. In fact, we took out an old apartment building that was there, and those sold for probably around a million. Yeah? And, and I haven't had one neighbor call me and say, hey, my house went down in value because you put those townhouses in there. No, I don't think it does. I think a property continues to go up in value in Edina. And I think that nobody has a concern, should have a concern, about whether their property values are going to be going down because this project could potentially be approved. So, what about this, this zoning issue? I think we've gotten comfortable with the notion that despite the assertions that it's spot zoning, it's not really spot zoning. The city has broad discretion, I think, to proceed with the rezoning unless there is no rational basis for the decision. And I think the Planning Commission, by a vast majority vote, and the staff, has convinced me at least, that there's, there is a rational basis for the decision to rezone, to amend the comprehensive plan, and adopt the recommendations that both staff was recommending and, and that the Planning Commission recommended with their significant majority. So, you know, you, it's, it's not easy going in a common direction formed by different points of view, but we do the best we can. And when I think about that, and I have, Member Eggen raised a really good point, that somebody bought that house, but it's, I'm reminded, it was for sale, I think for two years, before these gentlemen came along with this idea of putting in townhouses along Vernon Avenue. And I don't agree that it's surrounded by single-family homes. There's a school behind it with a parking lot and a playground, and there's a single-family home to the east of it that is, is supportive of the project, doesn't want to change the zoning on their property, and it's Vernon to the south. So it's not surrounded by single-family homes. It's on a collector's street. It's a quarter of a mile from multifamily dwellings. One of them has probably 400 units in it, and there's, it's a, it's a, you know, probably a quarter of a mile from Jerry's Grocery Store in that commercial district. So, a, as you march west on Vernon Avenue, and you think about places where you could add a little more density without affecting the lives of people and really impacting traffic, I mean, that, that street is designed to handle much more traffic than it handles, it seems like a perfect opportunity to increase density in, in a gentle sort of way, in a very, very gentle sort of way. And so, I'm in favor of it too, and I, I understand the worries of the people that are in the neighborhood and the broader neighborhood. It's not precedent-setting. We're going to look at each one of these situations when it comes before us. And, and I've been doing this long enough, and the rest of us have too, that know that zoning is by no means static, you know? It's not the Ten Commandments. I mean, things change in, in towns. Circumstances change. Needs change. The classic example of that is Waters Assisted Living Home, down behind the fire station on Tracy. It was 1,000 feet from any single-family home, and people fought that like crazy, and it's an integral part of our community now, an important part, and that was all in an R1 zone. But we rezoned it to accommodate the needs of people in our town that needed to be in an assisted living facility. And now I understand it, it accommodates some of the people from that very neighborhood that were opposed to it in the first place. So, I, I think this is an appropriate use, a really good use for this piece of property that can accommodate those four townhouse units, as recommended by staff and as recommended by the Planning Commission. And understanding the concerns of, of the people that surround it, I still think, based on the experience that we have here, that everything is going to be okay, and everything's going to be good, and it's going to fit right in the neighborhood, and they're going to be great neighbors, and people will love having them there. So I'm going to be supportive of it as well. Member Jackson and Member Risher.
Yeah, I have a quick question for Mr. Teague. When the Planning Commission, the two commissioners who voted no, I was under the belief that they voted no because it was not dense enough. They wanted more density than this project.
Yes, that was, that was, that was part of it.
Okay, thank you.
And then, if I remember this, the other part of it, they talked a lot about if we go through our comp plan process, thinking that there would be actually more density planned for in that area. And the question was, should we wait for that or not? And so if I, if you want to come in on that.
Yes, that's right. And this is an area, this whole corridor is an area that the Planning Commission, you remember, they, they put together areas that they want to look at as part of the comprehensive plan in a small-area study. And this is one of those areas that we'll be looking at when we update the comprehensive plan in a few years.
Member Risher.
Just to be clear, I did not say it was surrounded by single-family homes. I said it was surrounded by R1 zoning, which is what schools are in. But since the topic of spot zoning has come up, is my understanding, you know, reading different references to what justifies spot zoning, you look at the case in Rochester where there was a request to rezon, to zone to R4, but there was R4 zoning surrounding that lot. And here, we don't have any R2. And I think the point that was just made about the Planning Commission and those members who were concerned that it wasn't dense enough, when you go back to the first sketch plan, when we first heard this, it wasn't just this parcel, it was the other parcel right next to it that was going to be rezoned along with it. So it was a larger area of land. And the whole idea about comprehensive plans is so that you can have, you know, orderly, planned zoning. And when you do things in a way where you're just going parcel by parcel, and particularly in this case, where, you know, we are going to be asking the Met Council to revise our comprehensive plan, and, you know, we have already surpassed the amount of market-rate housing that the Met Council has tasked us to produce. We have soared beyond that, and we are not getting close to the amount of affordable housing that we need. So I think, I think that's important to recognize. I also think it's important to think about public trust and how people look at zoning. And, you know, I started going through language in the comprehensive plan and how preserving existing residential character is a priority, okay? And how the city needs to balance the desire for larger homes with state-of-the-art features with the interest of neighbors. And there's all this nuanced language that is there. And what we are doing by just taking this one single piece of property, I mean, it's just one single lot, and actually going through a comprehensive plan amendment and then rezoning it, I think, is really extreme. In the Rochester case, they were able to add 49 apartments slash condos. And, I mean, here, we're talking four townhomes. It's not, like, that's the public benefit, and you think about the other issues there as well. And I think this is really an unfortunate precedent. I want to underscore, when I said one double-dwelling unit, this lot is large enough for one double, for two double-dwelling units. But there are a lot of parcels in the neighborhood that could be, that are sized, that are large enough that they could handle one double-dwelling unit. And so I, I just, and as you look, look at that zoning map, this is going to be just that one parcel standing alone marked for R2. And you look at all of Edina, you don't see that anywhere else. Okay? So I just, I don't see how this makes sense. Thank you.
Councilmember Jackson.
First of all, I'd like to clarify that the Met Council did not task us to build market-rate housing. I believe you're thinking of the study that was done for the Housing Task Force that talked about what different types of housing might be built in our city. The Met Council didn't, at no point in time, told us the number of houses that we could build that were market-rate. It was from the Maxfield study. There was a certain number of market-rate versus affordable, but it was not the Met Council. And I think that when we look at this map, we're looking backwards. We're looking historically. And if we're going to look forward, I think that if we deny this comprehensive plan change, this will be a lost opportunity. Because I think, looking forward, the Planning Commission is going to be looking at Vernon, but this lot will have a new building on it, and that won't be up for change for probably 50 years, maybe more. So we're going to freeze this in time with the standards from 2018 or before, when we know that this is something the Planning Commission wants to see change. So I think it would be a lost opportunity to simply look backwards and freeze this period, this housing in time. Unfortunately, you know, it'd be great if there was a brand-new comprehensive plan, and they just come forward and said, this is all, should be dense. So this is a little, it's an anomaly with our timing cycle, but I think it is looking to the future as opposed to looking backwards.
Anything else? Okay. I think in the Rochester case, the court decided that the city had broad discretion in proceeding with rezoning. So that was not determined to be spot zoning. All right. So we've got three actions that the staff has requested us to consider. The first one would be the approval of the comprehensive plan amendment, and that requires a four-fist vote. Is there a motion to approve the amendment to the comprehensive plan to provide for this particular project?
So moved.
Second.
All right. We got a motion, second, to approve a comprehensive plan amendment to re-guide 5516 Vernon Avenue from low-density residential to low-density attached residential. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption resolution, or in favor of approving the comprehensive plan amendment to re-guide 5516 Vernon Avenue from low-density residential to low-density attached residential, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed?
Aye.
Curried. Comprehensive plan amendment is approved. Next is the rezoning and the preliminary plat and site plan for 5516 Vernon Avenue. That requires a single majority vote. Is there a motion to adopt the rezoning preliminary plat and site plan for 5516 Vernon Avenue?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion, second, to adopt the rezoning preliminary plat and site plan for 5516 Vernon Avenue. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adopting the rezoning preliminary plat and site plan for 5516 Vernon Avenue, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed?
Aye.
Curried. The rezoning preliminary plat and site plan for 5516 Vernon Avenue is approved. And is there a waiver of the second reading of ordinance number 2025-08?
So moved.
There a second? Director Teague, do you want to talk about that a little bit again?
Yeah, so with an ordinance amendment that goes along with the rezoning, in order to waive second reading, you need four votes. Otherwise, it could, it could pass on a majority vote, but we would have to come back for second reading.
Okay. And that's on Resolution 2025-47? Or is that, or 2025-08?
Yes, that's the ordinance 2025-08.
Okay.
And why are we recommending that? I apologize.
So it doesn't have to come back in front of us again to approve, approve the ordinance change on second reading?
Okay.
Let me find that one. Okay, hold on a minute. So the ordinance would amend the city's zoning map from R1 single-dwelling unit district to PRD2, Planned Residential District 2 for 5516 Vernon Avenue. If we waive second reading on that, wouldn't have to deal with it again.
We voted, the motion was for the rezoning.
Yeah.
I don't remember a motion to pass the ordinance.
No, that's right. The rezoning dealt with 2025-47.
Yeah. So this is a motion to--
This is a new one.
This is a motion to pass the ordinance change and waive second reading.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, I was looking at 2025-47. So ordinance 2025-08 would be an ordinance amending the city's zoning map from R1 single-dwelling unit district to PRD2, Planned Residential District 2 for 5516 Vernon Avenue, and potential waiver of second reading. Is there a motion to that effect? that effect?
Still moved.
Mr. Jackson moves.
Second.
Member Pierce seconds the adoption of an ordinance, ordinance 2025-08, which would amend the city zoning map from R1 to single-dwelling unit district to PRD, Plan Residential District 2 for 5516 Vernon Avenue with a waiver of second reading. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 2025-08 with waiver of second reading, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Carried. Ordinance 2025-08 with a waiver of second reading is approved. I think those are the three actions you wanted us to take.
That is, thank you.
All right. Thank you. Gentlemen, thank you. Get some good advice on that project now and what it should, what it should be. Yep. Listen to member Pierce. He's got, he's been thinking about this. Okay, here's another meaty project, or meaty issue to discuss here. Resolution 2025-45, which would approve the adoption of a property tax abatement and providing for the sale of up to 8.985 million in general obligation tax abatement bonds. And our finance director, Pa Tao, has this along with Nick Anhut from Ellers. And talked about this in June. It is, has a lot of aspects to it, and it'll be, and looking forward to the conversation.
Nice. I can just use this. Click. Can I pretend? Okay, it works. Good evening, mayor and council member. How are you guys doing?
Great.
Just to reiterate, yes, we did meet in June 17. And so with a little bit of refresher, tax abatement bonds allow cities to fund public improvements through general obligation bonds, subject to a public hearing and a city council, a city resolution approval. We had the public hearing started on June 17, and we held, and we opened public hearing for that purpose. The public hearing closed on July 5. Comments were received on our community engagement platform, Better Together Edina, and it is also included in your council packet for reference. So the purpose of tonight's meeting is for council to take action on approving resolution 2025-45 for the adoption of property tax abatement and provide for the sale of up to 8.985 in general obligation tax payment bonds. However, tonight's action will give staff the authority to fund the project with bonding. What that doesn't, what that is saying is that it just gives us the authority to fund it with bond. We can work on the fine-tuning the amount before we do the issuance of bond, and Nick will provide more information on that in his presentation later on. But I just wanted to recap as all. A little bit of background on the Aquatic Center. I showed this slide before. The Aquatic Center opened in 1958, and it has gone multiple, it has undergone multiple updates. Significant issues include electrical failures, corrosion, and operational challenges. Design work for the repairs has been ongoing with temporary fixes implemented. Then the project required a new pump house structure to house the necessary equipment at this center. Major electrical failures occurred in 2021 with interim repairs that staff completed, and design and assessment work continued through 2022 and 2025. The city did pursue state bonding, but was unsuccessful. Therefore, we are proposing this project, which is at 8.9 million for a new pump house, which is why we're here tonight. So with that being said, I will flip it over to Nick. Thank you, Nick.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director Tao. Mr. Anhut, welcome.
Thank you, mayor, members of the council. Nick Anhut from Ellers and Associates.
Can't think of anybody we'd rather see at 10 o'clock at night than you.
I don't doubt it. Thank you for this.
To talk about tax abatement on top of it, what a bonus.
That's right. So really, the question before the council tonight is whether or not to pursue bonding for this project. As we've reiterated in the public hearing and as well as past presentations, the authority for the city to issue debt for certain projects rests with what is written in the statutes and the various powers that are provided there. The statutes do allow the city to issue debt for a project like this, but it needs to go through a certain process or procedure, which we're suggesting is tax abatement. So, subject to a public hearing process and approval of a city resolution to establish an abatement, a city council can issue debt for a public improvement project like the pump house that Pa just mentioned, as long as it is in an amount equal to the sum of tax abatements from designated properties within that resolution. Abatement allows a city to allocate taxes generated from certain properties that are designated and use them for a purpose that serves a public purpose. You need to identify the properties by parcel, and the amount of taxes that are generated from those parcels need to meet or exceed the amount that you intend to levy to pay for that public improvement. It is not a special taxing district. The properties that are included within the abatement are not taxed any differently from any other properties or any of the like properties within the city of Edina. There, it is a special levy that gets spread over the entire tax base. But you need to essentially prove that you have the capacity to be able to pay for the improvement by adopting the abatement. And in adopting an abatement, the council also needs to find that it expects that the benefits of the project to at least equal or exceed the costs incurred in paying for it. And it needs to meet a certain set of criteria adopted within the statutes, of which there are, there are many, but two examples. It only needs to meet one of them, is that the public improvement will provide or help acquire or construct public facilities, or the abatement will help finance or provide public infrastructure, both of which fit the criteria for this project. Abatements have certain limitations. It can only last for a term of up to 20-year maximum, and the designated properties that are included within the abatement cannot also be within a tax increment financing district for the length of time that it is outstanding. In addition, there is a cap put in place on the amount that a city can adopt for all of the abatements that are outstanding. The city has currently none. But if the city were to adopt multiple abatements for multiple different projects, you would have a limitation on how much that could be, and that limitation is based on the size of the tax base that you represent. And just for illustrative purposes, we do have the existing tax capacity for the city of Edina. If you were to pursue this abatement, we do anticipate that it would be about $900,000. That is the area of properties that are represented on the map. And as you can see, the annual limitation is well in excess of that, at $21 million. So this by itself would not put you up against that limit, but be advised that the abatement would last for the length of time that the bonds are outstanding, and you'd have to weigh that when you consider other potential financing for projects in the future. As Pa mentioned, the purpose of this financing is to provide the funds necessary to provide the new pump house structure for the Aquatic Center. In looking at the, the annual operating budget of the Aquatic Center, and given the amount of, the size of this project, we do not anticipate that there would be other resources or revenue generated from this facility that would be able to pay back this, the, the amount of debt that is necessary for this project. And so that's why we are pursuing this abatement and the use of levy funds to be able to provide its repayment. An additional note to add is that the facility is used by the public. It is available for the public. It is a governmental facility, but it is also used by qualified 501(c)(3) organizations for various swimming events and clubs. As we mentioned in the public hearing, the abatement area that is proposed is 328 parcels, residential parcels, that are right adjacent to the facility and neighboring this amenity, and do have a direct access or benefit from having this amenity nearby. And this area was also selected because it does not expect to overlap with any current or future TIF requirements or TIF districts going off into the future. It does represent a sufficient amount of existing current city of Edina taxes in the amount of approximately $903,000 that will be more than sufficient to repay the amount of bonding that is being pursued. And so with that, the consideration this evening is for the council to adopt a resolution to approve establishing a property tax abatement for a term of up to 15 years in order to provide the potential funding for the Aquatic Center project and adopt the required findings that I mentioned, that it serves a public purpose, providing a public facility and public infrastructure within the city of Edina. This resolution by itself does not authorize an actual bond issuance. Typically, in the process, we would come back before the council and seek approval at the time that we're ready to move ahead with the finite bonding amount that's necessary for the project. We hope to do that in the near future after getting a little bit more information about the potential construction costs. Right now, what we're talking about is an estimate. And we would plan that there would be a subsequent action from the city council to go ahead and move forward with the bonding when we've determined what that appropriate amount and funding plan will be. But this does give, this resolution would give the council the authority to consider debt in the future for this project without having to pursue an alternative like a referendum or some other type of action. So be happy to address any questions that the council has, but we're certainly recommending that you do move forward if you are in consideration of this project to adopt the tax abatement at this time.
Thanks, Mr. Anhut. Member Pierce.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So I, I just have a couple of questions on the construct that we're using. So, so the first question, from an abatement perspective, we have the outlined area, and you could bring that up. And then the statement that you made is that, that those parcels benefit from the Aquatic Center. And so I want to understand why this area, if the Aquatic Center is used more broadly in Edina. So there must be, and then you talked about overlapping with the TIF district. And so I just want to understand that first question. So why this area specifically, if this is a, a asset that's used broadly by Edina, and it's also, to a certain extent, a regional asset as well? That's question one.
Thank you, councilmember Pierce, mayor, members of the council. In discussion with staff, the primary consideration was that TIF question, where we did not believe that there would be any potential future overlap with the need to use or establish a new TIF district within the area adopted for this abatement. So that was the prime consideration. And then the second consideration was that, yes, it did appear that it met the criteria for being an area within the city that definitely benefited from this amenity. I think the council could make an argument that as a public resource, the entire city benefits from this facility. But our primary consideration was that TIF question. We did discuss, looking at some commercial areas that are not too far away as well. However, the potential that there might be some need for redevelopment or some other use of that tax increment tool in the future, an unknown and not a sure thing. But we felt like this was a safe bet in terms of the area that could provide the mathematical equivalent of the taxes necessary to meet the final.
Okay, so then, two things. One, was the TIF overlap that you talked about. Two, we needed to ensure that there were enough, there's enough funding to cover the cost of the, the upgrades as well. Those are the two primary. Is that fair?
That is, that is exactly it.
That's exactly it. Okay. Okay. And then my second question is, I think is still a construct question. So, and I'll, maybe I'll say it this way. So we have a pie that's our property tax pie. And I think essentially what we're doing is we're saying, we need to take a slice of that existing pie, and we're going to earmark those funds to be used on this asset. We're not generating more, right? We're just allocating a sliver of that, and we're using this, we're, what slide is this? We're using this outline, these parcels, these 328 parcels, to represent that.
I think that's true.
Frame it a different way.
Please, please, frame it.
We don't have any expectation that this would take away resources that you need to levy for other services. So the pie that you're describing, and I want to be very clear, the expectation is that we're going to need to increase the levy in order to pay back the bonds for this project. So the pie is a larger pie than you're dealing with right now compared to your 2025 budget. And we are going to take a slice of, from that, and we are proving that there is existing tax capacity that can do that. The abatement statute requires we designate properties that are contributing to the tax base that will, will meet that requirement. But it is not a, we're not peeling anything away from your potential budget. In fact, the opposite, we're going to need to actually increase the levy to repay these bonds.
And so why do you say we need to increase the levy to pay back the bonds?
I should say, that is a decision up for the council whether or not you need to increase the levy. But if you do not increase the levy, and then we, and we add a $900,000 financial obligation, you're going to need to balance that budget somehow and peel back from the budget in, in some capacity.
And we could do that with levy, or we could do that with other public money. But, but it's hard to judge the direct impact because the, the pie is going to increase as well, right? And we know this just because that's what happens to our tax base every year, but.
Yeah. Okay, so then, it, it, so it would have been, I, I maybe would have internalized it slightly differently. And perhaps we did this, if we were saying, the project comes forward, we need to do these upgrades. We went out there, we looked at the, the asset. We walked through all of the changes we needed to make. And, Mayor Janil, you said, we need to do this, and so we're going to take this, we're going to reprioritize our CIP, and we're going to put this into the budget. And we need to fund that. And then you would have come forward and said, our tax levy is now going to go up by 2% to cover this. And then we would have voted on the tax levy, right? So that's kind of, that, that's what I think we're essentially saying.
You are, but I think it's important to recognize that because this is a recreation enterprise, you don't have, the city council doesn't have the authority just to increase the levy. That's why, that's why we're looking at this as a, as a vehicle to get at the levy increase.
Yeah, got it. Yeah, so that, that's, that's good. And then, and then what I would say, and this is why I was pushing on, we have to increase the levy. I don't know that the position I set on our target for our levy changes because of this. I feel like we're making a priority to say this needs to get done. And so, yeah, we would look at, how do we absorb this versus just assuming, nope, we can just add $900,000 or $1 million property tax revenue to cover it. And so I would still have the, both of those things for me would still be true. I'd want them still to both be true, and then have that conversation. And so I just wanted to make sure I understood the, the construct on, on those three points.
Member Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we had a lot of emails from people, and I want to start with a financial question. While we have identified these neighborhoods to comply with the statute, the burden of paying the taxes for these bonds will be felt across all taxable properties in the city, correct? These homes aren't going to be carrying the weight of that by themselves. Everybody will, all taxable properties Everybody will, all taxable properties will have to, will be covering the cost of these bonds, correct?
Member Jackson, that is, that is correct, and that's the previous slide I had mentioned, it's not a special taxing district, it doesn't, it doesn't impact these properties in any way different from others. And that is because, in order to repay these bonds, you will have to adopt an abatement levy. And that abatement levy will be added to all your special levies that are adopted at the end of the year through your truth and taxation process, and they are all summed together and spread over the entirety of the tax base. So the, what we're doing right now is really a capacity issue. We're identifying that, the council says that, yes, we can designate these properties, include them within an abatement, we do have the capacity to be able to do it. Now, how you manage that levy increase, this does not tell you how to do that in any way, shape, or form. That's up to the council to, through your normal budgeting process to figure out what is your priorities. But you are at the onset, before you have the authority to bond, identifying that there is existing tax capacity, tax base within the community to be able to absorb this cost.
Thank you. I figure if we say it three or four different ways, the exact same thing, it'll sink in just to alleviate some of those fears that were out there. Now, I have some facilities and parks questions for you guys. We've heard from a lot, a lot of different perspectives, and one of them is, well, why did you build all these other things and not fix the pump room in years past? And I think the last big improvement was we determined 2011, it was built with a surfing pool. Is that correct?
Mayor and Councilmember Jackson, the flow rider was around the 2011, 2012 time period, and then the tower slides are around that 2016, 2017 period, so roughly that eight, nine years ago.
Okay.
And when you're on, Director, I have a-
Two park and rec directors ago, actually, right?
Yeah, like six knee surgeries versions, so.
Yeah, so, I mean, I would love to be able to go back in time and like figure out exactly what the things were, but we've had difficulty finding reports on that. And I wasn't on council then, so I am not responsible for those decisions. I just want to make that clear. And so there's a lot of woulda, shoulda, coulda in, in the conversations. But tell me a little bit, Director Vetter, about the operations of the pool and why it was once profitable and it's not profitable now.
Okay. That's a great question. Mayor, Councilmember Jackson, you know, we do look historically at what our revenues and expenses are annually. One of the things that was a great deviation to our operating budget, I guess a couple of things, is, one, if you recall, during the 2020 season, we did not operate under the COVID pandemic. A number of communities didn't, a number did. Our view at that time, that was kind of a marker for us, I guess you could say, on this journey, were the complications with how we were going to manage through that, with our staffing and ensuring a safe and continued environment. Beginning in the 2021 season was when we truly realized on that date and timeline the, the major failures that occurred. So starting with the 2021 season, we actually had to refund 1/12 of all of our revenue on season passes because we were closed for those eight days. In a closure or an expected revenue week for the Aquatic Center is around $100,000. When we think about roughly 12 weeks, a $1.2 million budget. And kind of two deviations have really had a, a great trajectory for us, faster than we feel with the amenities we have, we can capture revenue back on the consistency and what our user amenities. And one is the cost of our seasonal staffing. I had mentioned when I had first arrived in 2019, 2020, one of the first things we looked at was, at that time, there was talk of a $15 minimum wage. And we wanted to look at a disruption report, like if we had to go to that, how great would that impact our operations? Well, we didn't have to worry about a mandate to do that. The market, the changes through the pandemic, hiring crunches, our labor pool took that away from us and accelerated that greatly. So we went from that sub-15 to now that $16 to $19 lifeguard wage, that $18 to $22 lifeguard instructor wage, right? So the marketplace and the competition has accelerated our staffing costs, which is one of our greatest expenditures on an annual basis, right? If you take off energy and everything else, it's our staffing costs. And that's one thing that we, we really want to try to create the best environment for our staff and recruit really talented people. We are not NASA, we are not brain surgery, but when you're looking at lifeguarding and safety at an aquatic center, you don't want to mess up. We pride ourselves on having a great staff, talented, we want to compensate them accordingly. The other deviation in our expenditures is, as these repairs are needed, as we're making these incremental ones, because there isn't a CIP mechanism to pay for those, we've been paying for all these repairs out of our operating costs. So when we talk about having to replace three VFDs or an electrical panel, when a pump goes down, we've been absorbing that cost into our operations. So those are kind of the two key delineators that we've had kind of since that 2021 failure.
So do you anticipate that if we make these repairs, we would break even at the pool?
That I'd have to look back at those things. I think we're going to get closer. Our goal is to always try to break even, right? I think we will have to look at what price increases are based on our amenities. We do feel sometimes we're at top of market, and we're trying to be very careful on how we can introduce new revenues without trying to price someone out, whether that's on a daily, whether that's on different events we do. It's one thing that we also do with groups, we've got a lot of feedback on group use. Groups are great because they show up when there's bad weather. When the kids club comes, they're going to come, kind of rain or shine, where other people stay home. So we really want to try to balance between the season pass, our daily fee, our groups. And one thing we're trying to capture as well is like, if the season pass is too high, we're starting to offer the five and 10 group daily admission packets to try to get you enticed to buy more through that, through that process. So always looking at the price adjustment, try to catch up on that. We've kind of taken a more gradual try to catch up to some of the peak staffing costs that have gone up faster than we can adjust to in a two-year budget cycle.
Okay, thank you. And then I have a question for Mr. Otten, Director Otten.
Good evening.
Good evening, thank you. So we have a pool built in 1958. This equipment, I think some of it probably goes back to 1958. How can we, as a city, with these assets that we have, these facilities we have, start planning so that we know we're going to have to replace things? And I, people are just, you know, the, the emails I've been getting have been pretty heartrending on, you know, because I like to plan ahead of time in my personal budget. I know there's going to be an expense coming up, I start planning, you know, maybe 10 years in advance, right? Save up enough money for something that's going to come up. How is we, as a city, can we work on having funds to repair or replace our lovely facilities? Because they're falling apart, we can't stop it, they're going to age, they're going to need to be replaced. How can this be 0 to $8.9 million planning-wise? And then I want to talk about the $8.9 million. So do you have any, I talked to Lindstrom, the town of Lindstrom, they actually, for their depreciation every year, the asset depreciation, put money aside so that when a replacement comes up, they have money to do that. Have we ever talked about that for facilities, or do you have any, in your professional experience, seen that done?
Yeah, I mean, the funding mechanism, I can't really speak to, Member Jackson. I can say that I have looked at what, you know, we would consider like a burn rate, right? What do we need to set aside every year for, you know, making our facilities whole? It's closer to 10 or 12 million dollars, and that would really, you know, over a period of 10 to 15 years, start bringing us back to that baseline level, right? So I think that's a pretty substantial amount of money every year, considering what our, you know, capital improvement plan sets aside just for these, you know, facilities to be maintained. It's usually between a million and a half, $2 million annually, so it greatly exceeds that. I think that's our biggest challenge. You know, we are kind of, you know, with the age of our facilities, we're really stuck in a reactive state at this point in time. And that's what you're seeing with some of these large costs is, it's tough to be proactive when we're constantly putting out fires for, you know, things were built in the 1950s, 1960s. You know, our, our engineering staff are going through some of these things with infrastructure, you know, throughout the years, and they're finally starting to see some of that, you know, long-term planning, long-term financial goals pay off with these things. So I can't answer you, you know, what the funding mechanism is. I can say that, you know, every building, campus, you know, I guess government struggles with these things because the needs greatly outweigh what's available for funds. And so we're, we're doing our best to try and get ahead of some of these things. I know at a past meeting, we talked about, you know, the software we use to project out what we need for our, you know, asset preservation needs or our billing needs annually. And that, that's where I kind of came up with that 10 to 12 million dollars, was looking at it, you know, trying to look at that 10 to 15-year outlier of that. Does that answer your question?
It does, absolutely. And then I have a follow-up question. I got out the CIP, we had $4 million for 2025 for the pump room replacement, and we're looking at 8.9.
Yeah.
That's a huge jump, more than double.
Mm-hmm.
What's the cause of that huge jump in, in cost?
Yeah, and I, we actually, Perry and I have some slides later on that can kind of describe some of those things and show you where those are at. So I'm happy to go into that either now, or we can wait until we get to the second half of this presentation.
We, we struggled a bit about, do we want you to, do we want you to, to consider first doing the project or not, or do the financing or not?
Yeah.
So we, we've sort of hit on the financing piece first, but we knew we were going to have to answer questions about the, the project kind of intermittently, and then probably again, come back and, and take those three actions, so.
Okay.
It's, we're happy to do this.
Well, those are my questions.
Okay.
They're on the table, and that's, the comments will come later, and I'll, I'll let my fellow members ask questions. Thank you.
Berisha.
So we're looking at this really expensive repair or upgrade. What else could be on the docket for the next, for the future? You know, are, are we going to be hearing that the tiles are all falling off the pool and we need, I mean, what, what other major costs could we be looking at?
You know, we, we have many needs there, and I think, you know, Perry can probably answer some of these questions a little bit better about some of the, the long-term master planning for that building. We've really concentrated on the equipment at the filter room. There is some minor repair work that we need to do into the pools and the structures themselves that was code dictated, but also some planned maintenance that we're taking advantage of. I think, you know, with any type of system like this, you're going to have maintenance needs for slides that's going to happen annually, biannually, whether it's painting or mechanical equipment for those, the wave rider, and then some of the other pools, systems. The mechanical electric equipment that manages all the filtration will be brand new, but then you still have to address, you know, any of the needs inside of like the changing house, the concession stands, and some of those user amenities at some point as well.
I'm just trying to get a handle on, you know, like a classic first car I had, right? 350 bucks, and then I, it started dying on me, and somebody said, oh, just put in a new transmission. But then I took it to an auto shop to find out what the value is of the car, and they told me it had the value of a used Kleenex, and if it would start, I could leave. And what I'm getting at is, we're asking, we're being asked to make a really, really big investment. And I don't know the structural integrity of the pool, I don't know, high level, there's no kind of analysis of what it means to put that money into that asset. Because I, I mean, I don't really know how great it, I mean, what the state is. And I, when I went to the League of Minnesota Cities, I, my goal was to talk to as many people as I could about their pools. And, you know, when I mentioned the figure we were talking for the pump room, the response was sort of like, well, maybe you need to just build a whole new pool.
Question to you.
You know, and so that was there. Or if you're going to invest that much money, maybe you want to step back and talk about making it an enclosed facility so that it can be used all year long. And so, I mean, it was really responding to the reality that this is a huge chunk of change, and maybe we need to pause and really think about, you know, what does this investment actually mean? And I feel like I, I don't have the context that I need in order to vote in an informed way, because I, I don't know, is the pool going to start? I, I don't know structurally what, what I'm dealing with, and it's an old pool. So I'm wrestling with that.
Member Agnew.
I don't, I don't think that I have any specific questions. I think, we talked a little bit too about, like, how does this process work last time? I know I was new to it. I, I'm supportive of us using this strategy. I, I don't know that there's a perfect strategy for us to use, but I, I think if we decide that we want to continue to maintain the Aquatic Center, we need to make this investment. And so I, I treat it as an asset. I, I want us to talk about all of the other questions that my fellow council members have. But in general, I, I do think that this is an important piece of infrastructure that we have within the community that I want to continue to invest in and maintain. So no direct questions.
I really wrestle with this one. I think it's really a difficult situation. I remember Risher raised some interesting questions. What else do we have to do over there? You know, it's already losing $300,000 a year. And just back up, and I'll say, years ago, we had a young guy in the city council, and he said, well, but if, if an enterprise doesn't capture at least 85% of its cost, we should even think about shutting it down. I said, well, you, you better start thinking about closing down Bramar Ice Arena then. At the time, you know, I said, is that what you want to do? It was one of the biggest hockey programs in the country, and the people have decided in our town that these are the things that they think are important to be doing, and, and helping our kids out, and having a great ice facility, and they're willing to subsidize it. It doesn't mean that everything we operate has to make money, or we're not going to operate it. But somewhere in there is this tension that I'm feeling, that it's a, it's, it's, it looks like it's a $9 million problem, but we don't even really know how big the problem is because we haven't got any bids. And we got to go about this process, as I understand it, in an awkward sort of way because it's a, an abatement process. So instead of having an RFP where we get a bid and we know how much it's going to cost to fix it, and then deciding if we want to borrow the money to fix it, we're kind of shooting in the dark. So I mean, what if we shoot low and now it's, and with interest, it's $12 million? And so, what have you got, 22,000 households in Edina, is that worth 50 bucks a household a year? Maybe, yeah, maybe. But still, this whole notion of, have we figured this out the right way? I mean, I think about the golf course. You know, the golf course, you've made money for years, just like the pool. Then it stopped making money, and we went through this year-long analysis of trying to decide what to do. Might take, might have taken two years. And we decided to go from 27 holes to 18 holes, and do, and rebuild the range, and make all these other investments, change around the par three, the exact course, make some modifications over there. And now we're make, we're netting over a million dollars a year instead of losing a couple hundred thousand bucks a year. I'm not saying we need that same sort of turnaround story on the pool, but to remember Risher's point, I'd, I'd like to have enough information, so I feel like I'm making a reasoned decision. All, all we got today was this email saying, well, 80%, 86% of the season pass holders are Edina residents. All this is really helpful information, but it begs the broader question of the analysis. And now here we are at the 11th hour, we feel like we're in a pinch, we're pinched here because you're saying, well, I don't know if I can keep this thing running or not. And it might be, it might go down next year like it did for that one month, we could try to hold this thing together another year while we analyze the whole thing. And that has its own inherent risks. Or you say, you know, we might have to just shut the pool down. And then that has a lot of risks associated with it too, because we could see what happened during COVID. Our business went down, and we haven't recaptured all that business yet. So I, I really feel like, it just feels really awkward to try to figure out what's the best thing to do here. I don't know what to do. And Mr. Anan can say, yeah. And Mr. Anna can say, yeah, all I'm asking you to do is authorize us to go find out what it costs to do it. But you, part of this whole process tonight is authorizing the issuance of a contract with somebody. So it's not just saying tonight that we get, we, we, we're going to see what happens next. We're going to say, okay, maybe we'll, maybe we'll fund this and borrow the money to do it. Once we know how much it costs. But we've got a contract sitting here too, and whether to do the project or not. So to me, it's, you want to be making the best decision you can for your taxpayers. And they might say, hey, mayor, don't worry about it. 50 bucks a month, we can, we can deal with that for a certain number of years to make sure this pool stays in existence. But the whole, not knowing what else it needs, to me, kind of begs the whole question of what, what does our town want to do? What do our people in our town want to do? I don't know. I usually have a better sense of things than this right now. I just feel like I'm in limbo land. I don't know what to do.
Mayor and council, one thing that we could do now is Derek, Derek and I could go over the slides that we had prepared for the agenda item, I think two more from now when we talk specifically about what's in the project. I think that may, has a chance to give you a little bit more clarity or at least additional information that you could consider this evening, if you'd like. We were going to give it later, we could give it now for you.
Yeah, I think anything, any additional information will be helpful, I think.
I would suggest now, I think some of the questions you're, you're starting to surface here are going to be answered in this presentation.
So again, Derek and I will both give this to you about that item that is on your upcoming one. So again, I think you've seen this before. Again, this is the timeline of where the project's been since that 2021 failure. I think you've, you've seen this before. The one item that I'll focus on next is just that February 2024 work session that we had. When we did talk to you about this in a little bit greater detail. If you recall, maybe you didn't recall. I always say, if it's been longer than 30 days, we should remind you. You have a lot that crosses your screen. So we're going to remind you tonight. In February 2024, we talked about some horizon level planning. That evening, we talked to you about the Aquatic Center, the golf course operations, and then an additional item that evening. But we talked to you about this kind of being in two distinct kind of areas. The first was to work on the pump and the filter room addition. And that was the equipment replacement. And at the same time, looking at this project as an opportunity for additional user amenities. Potentially that could bring additional revenue to the site. We also talked about some long-term facility upgrades and expansions to meet the additional level of our user expectations, address some of our operational challenges. And that wasn't something we were proposing at that time, nor are we this evening. But it is kind of on our horizon. I've been getting a lot of inquiries as well about, you know, who does use the Aquatic Center? How do they feel about the Aquatic Center? This was last season's user survey that we put out, tried to gauge satisfaction and how we are doing related to some of our operations. The one we always want to ensure are the two bookends, that I call them, on the left, is how they, our patrons feel about our staff. And they rate them very highly. On the other side of the equation, I mentioned it before with, we want to ensure everyone that comes in the door, exits the door. And that is the safety that you feel at the Aquatic Center. That is a huge component of our training and our discipline at that site is your safety. The ones in the middle are where we need the work, right? That is where we did see some lower marks related to not enough family changing areas, where our locker rooms were, those types of things. The two in the shaded box were the ones that we could have the potential to address through this project, the first portion of that. And that is seating and furniture and shade. Shade is a big thing for our users. Mayor, you had mentioned, we had provided some information to you, but also a lot of residents have contacted about who uses the Aquatic Center. And again, we are sometimes at a data disadvantage on how we are structurally set up. But we do know for the 2024 season, unique credit card transactions at the site. So if a credit card was used once, that is 76% Edina residents. So they may have used it multiple times, which would increase Edina resident usage. That percentage could go up. When it comes to season passes, those we do track by where you live. And it's been from 2024 season and to date through the 2025 season, we're in that 85, 86% Edina residents are using a season pass. Now again, that makes up anywhere from 28 to 35% of our revenue. The others are concessions, building rental. And the other vast one, which is a very hard gauge of what to get data on is daily admissions. Because for daily admissions, we do not track residency status. Obviously, we have kids come, they pay with cash, people still use cash. It slowed down our check-in process. And when we think about dailies, we don't know the exact resident status of that. But if you kind of correlate with who's using a credit card, that number kind of tells you whereabouts that is. We do often hear, a lot of Edina residents use daily fees because they have a lot of other activities and they're doing the math. You know, how many times do I want to break even on a season pass versus buying a daily fee? Which is why we're now offering those five and 10 punch pass packets as well, to get people more interested in that commitment. They have athletics, activities, the arts that they're involved in. So that's a little bit of a look into who's actually using the Aquatic Center. If recall this, this is when we kind of talked about those horizon-loving projects. Like what, what is out there? What are we thinking? We've got the checkbox around the pump and filter room and the shade structure. That's what we kind of talked about. That's what we need to focus on first. If recall, the rest of it was kind of that horizon level. What does that visioning of the site look like? We hear a lot about a compressed eating area, queuing lines at concessions, the ones selling the slushies and the pizza out of, right? As well as ADA access. How do we bring in additional shade, additional restroom opportunities for people? Councilmember Risher, to answer your question specifically, what is on the horizon in future CIP years? You would see maybe a visioning for this, but you would also see, you know, down the line, we will have investments on those slide towers. We would have investments on zero play on the horizon as well, as well as what expands for user amenities. So as you see future CIPs, you would look to see how does that roll in? As Mr. Rotten had said, you know, we're always trying to bring in, you know, those items as they come down that five, 10, 15, 20-year timeframe.
On that point, this is helpful, but I'm sitting here and I'm thinking about the era in which we exist. And not to get too heavy, deep and meaningful, but we're looking at rocky waters, you know, with federal cutbacks and all kinds of things. And people maybe not having as much access to healthcare. And I mean, there's a lot on my mind. And including our emergency responders and the need to fund them. And I keep thinking, I really liked what Member Jackson said, you know, planning a budget and knowing there's an expense coming up. And I look at this and I look at all these, and I think about all these other things. Just core safety issues, another fire station, all of that. And so it's, it's hard to see this and to sort of absorb the idea that we're talking about a really huge investment, you know, in a period of time that is kind of rattling. So I'm being totally honest here.
So we look back at that, we kind of had that two faces approach, right? Is we needed to look at the pump and filter room. What, what is required of the now, as well as looking, what does this look like into the future, right? We called it horizon level, right? Is looking out at that sunset, is where, where could we be? Where do we want to be? Let's be creative and look long-term. So we kind of broke into those two pieces. From there, that, that detail level of what we are focused on now, Derek's going to come and, and talk a little bit more about what's specific on that related to that filter room. And the opportunity for user enhancements that you'll see is really around that number one thing about shade seating is having rentable, reservable shade areas as well on this site. And he'll talk about how those were alternatives in this project. That could be considered a later date. And I can answer any of those questions, but Derek's going to walk you through the rest of the filter room and how that project structure has been set up. It's kind of looking at this as all of the items and not looking at them separately tonight.
You go back to that prior slide before Ms. Rotten comes up. This is interesting to me because it shows, I'll back up a second. I was just thinking about back where time, Member Jackson said, well, I wasn't on the council when this happened or that happened. When we decided to do the flow rider or the, or the pirate ship and the zip line. And Ed McColda was the guy who ran the pool back then. And he was, you know, it was profitable. And, and he would say, well, we need to do this and add this amenity to keep us ahead of the game with respect to the competition. And it seemed like he was right. You know, we, we would always, we'd spend some money and we'd add an amenity and business was good. And, and what I see here is that you got some really great ideas on how to make this pool better. And I don't know if this maximizes us and puts us at the top of class for competition for public pools or not. But that's at least something to get excited about is that if you had a plan that wasn't so long, so prolonged, I mean, think of like the golf course. I mean, we came up with a plan and we, we implemented the plan. And, and we got something sooner rather than later. It took a little while for it to grow out. We don't have that problem here. But in a way, it seems to me like it might be better to consider, well, how do we make the Aquatic Center the best Aquatic Center, public amenity that's in the metro? And the pump house becomes a part of an overall strategy to create the best amenity that we can so that we capture a lot of business and do some revenue forecasting. I, you know, because when I look at that, I think, well, those are some good ideas. Because when I look at that other bar graph about where we're, we're really good on the really important stuff. They like the people that work there and they feel really safe. And how's the facility? Ah, so, so how's the weight line at the concession stand? Eh, not the greatest. You know, how, what's the, how's the seating? How are the umbrellas? Eh, they're okay, you know? So have you given some big picture thought? Or you have moved sooner rather than later?
We have not looked at moving sooner than later because to us, it's really about the tolerance for the investment. And, you know, if, if there's comfort level around tonight, I think we continue that planning and long-term view of that and bring that back. Again, we, we talked about that as a horizon. We know we have these immediate needs now, fully recognizing that there are a lot of pressures on you as a council that you have to decide. But for us, we want to ensure that when we get the opportunity to speak with you, you know that we have a vision for the Aquatic Center. And we want to be nimble that we could go faster depending on the pace that you're, you're comfortable with.
If you came with that broader vision, would it have some financial projections attached to it?
Yes, we would do that. Because it would impact how we manage groups, how we manage concessions, what we look at from, you know, additional miscellaneous revenues there. We are really limited by our concession stand now, right? We talked about that window, but there are opportunities to do other things on the site for concessions and drinkware, where you can split those up, shorten queue lines, get people to go faster, online ordering, text ordering. There's a bunch of different variety of things that you can vision through this. But it's tough to do that, I always say, in that 17 by 15 window to do that right now.
Well, here we are. I mean, when I look at your timeline, I'm thinking, I wish we would have had this discussion on a broad basis in 2021. Here it feels like we're doing a Band-Aid, we're doing a $7 million Band-Aid in a way. I mean, it's, it's something that's going to be there for a long time, I know that. But it doesn't have the same sort of feel to it to me as planning for the future of the pool. It's a critical component of it.
Cause we don't have a pool without.
Yeah, we don't have a pool without it.
Right, it doesn't matter what your, your vision is if you don't have this particular thing fixed.
I've said, well, here about the pump room. I'm an infrastructure guy. I like infrastructure, but.
Well, let's talk infrastructure then. So as Mr. Vedder said, you know, I'm here to talk mainly to you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, about what's actually included in this project portion of it, right? So this first slide we're looking at here, this is just a quick refresher. This is a 3D representation of the new pump room. It's highlighting, you know, we're putting new pump apparatuses in there. We would replace the electrical supply lines and distribution center. This is what's been causing us so many headaches these last three or four years. The water displacement surge tanks, this is that code issue that we've brought up in the past where the existing surge tanks are too small for the size of our pool. This is what's really driving the need for a new building. It's actually also what's limiting us from just going in and replacing parts and pieces of equipment within that building. So at a certain point, it would trigger a code review and they would remake us, you know, replace these surge tanks at that point anyways. It also includes new water treatment systems. Obviously, we want new filters, clean water to make sure that everybody's healthy and safe that's using the pool. And then, you know, we're talking about state building mechanical energy codes. So we would, you know, be designing this pool to meet those new energy codes that we have, right? It, it currently has some of those amenities, but it doesn't have all that the new technology will bring. And then, you know, the, the big thing at the end there, and Mr. Vedder mentioned this, but it's that new filter space, it's going to create some opportunities really up above that we can add some user amenities in these spaces. And I'll get into that here in a couple of minutes, but those are those alternates that we talked about. You know, how do we make some improvements to, you know, the shade structures? How do we make improvements to the seating, you know, visible, usable area for people? So this next slide is a couple of the concepts. We've shown this to you in the past and we're labeling these as alternate A and alternate B. You can kind of see two isometric views of this. Alternate A is what is being known as kind of a, a structure or cabanas above the mechanical room, above the pool room. So that's added space by building this structure that we would be gaining. We're listing it as an alternate is because we don't need to build that structure. You know, we, we'd like to build it because it could be used as rentable, reservable space, you know, for people to come in. And that's that, that amenity, that generating amenity that we talked about. But it's not a necessity that we have to build that structure. Alternate B is the replacement of an existing shade structure there. So every day, families line up to get these, you know, seats that are kind of, you know, some of the prime seats at the pool edge underneath that existing structure. Unfortunately, we have to remove it because the supply lines for the pool run directly underneath there. So we need to remove it so we can get access to them for some of the construction methods there. So just two kind of quick isometric views. The, the A is obviously something that's added. The B is more of a replacement of an existing asset that we have. On this next slide, this is also another view of that. But what we're showing in alternate B is actually solar panels. We are planning on implementing photovoltaic panels on top of that to help with the energy loads, reduce some of the energy costs of the pools. But it also kind of aligns with our conservation and sustainability plan. The structure would be paid for by the project, but the solar panels and photovoltaic would be paid for through the conservation and sustainability plan. So we've got a dedicated funding source for that. Moving on, you know, this is where we kind of start talking about some of the budget, right? So this is something.
How do the solar panels help you?
Well, two things, they lower our energy costs, right? So that would pick up some of the energy load at the pool during those seasons.
How much?
The cost for them is about.
No, not the cost, but what's the benefit?
Oh, I'm sorry. It's, it's about 25 KV's. So it's maybe a quarter of the pool energy use, you know, these, these filters.
Get a quarter of your pool's energy use out of the, the solar array.
That's an approximate value, but yeah, it kind of ebbs and flows with the sun and clouds. So I'm sorry, moving on here to the, I guess, the, the construction cost progression. So we talked a little bit about this, you know, how did this increase so much, right? So this first estimate that we looked at, this is that, that June of 2022 estimate, right? That's at 50% schematic design, right? So this is not a fully fleshed project. This is just the ideas. We have about 2.8 million in construction costs at that time, 560 some thousand dollars of soft costs. So this is engineers, architects, design team members. The contingency was being included in that 2.8 and we were at 3.3. You could fast forward two and a half years. Remember, we took that pause when we weren't successful with state bonding. We took an opportunity to kind of flesh the design out a little bit more. That's when some of that master planning and visioning that Perry mentioned before happened. We were at 4.4, 4.3 million dollars. At that time, our soft costs came down a little bit because we had spent some of that money in the design process already. The contingency though, we increased that to, to cover some unknowns as we were starting to flesh this out and, and, you know, kind of play this out a little bit. to flesh this out and, you know, kind of play this out a little bit. And we're at 5.3, right? So that was late 2024. As of May of 2025, we have a little more of a solid idea of this. And the reason I say that is because we've engaged with a local general contractor, HNU Construction. They have been hired to do pre-construction work, and part of that pre-construction work was really to put numbers to the actual design, right? It's reached a point where they can go out and start collecting bids from some of their, you know, resources in the field, whether it's mechanical, electrical, any of the other, you know, contractors and trades. And they put it at $5.8 million. That increase in cost between the two of them, as I mentioned before, was we realized we had to deal with the pool drains at that point in time. But in addition to that, the material costs have increased just tremendously for these things. Those next couple of lines that we're going to get to is the soft costs, right? So some of those soft costs of that, 1.59 million, $847,000 of that is design. We've already spent about a half a million of the design money on this, so it's an additional 340,000. An owner's representative to manage this because of capacity with our own internal staff is about 170,000. 170 is for testing and survey and things like that that have to happen during a construction project. And then we have about $375,000 in there for miscellaneous FFNE and amenities, right? So this is buying new things for the pool shade areas and things like that. So we've got some money tucked away in there to cover those costs. When you have a new building, you're obviously going to have to outfit it with new equipment too. And then about $58,000 in utility costs, right? So that's coming in with new water lines and some of the underground work that has to happen in that area. And then we kind of have the two numbers that we have some play with, right? There's $650,000 in contingency costs that we're carrying, you know? That's not money that we have to spend. We hope we don't have to spend any of it, but we have to carry some money for unknowns and unforeseen things. And then the big one is this tariff contingency. This is something that we've, you know, been seeing across the board in construction projects. We have vendors that are trying to tack tariffs on to projects that are already in place, and we're trying to prevent, you know, some of those unknowns that we don't have at this time. So we're assuming that there's going to be some type of tariff downfall, and we're trying to cover those costs. So as you can see, that's where the total comes in at 8.98 million dollars. So if we look at it, you know, from a different standpoint, the bulk of that cost, obviously, down there at the bottom is the filter room, right? That's the addition. The soft costs, about a million and a half. And then the next four charts that you have out there, this contingency and tariff contingency, we hope we don't spend any of that money, right? That's something where, at the end of the day, we might be able to reduce our project budget down and not have that large of a project budget ultimately if we run into, you know, some favorable conditions out there. And then those next two up, that alternate A and alternate B, those are two things that we'd like to come back to the council, you know, in August, when we have a guaranteed maximum price through the bidding process and say, would you like to accept these? We have the option to not accept them, and then we would still be able to do the filter room. We'd still have usable space in both of those locations, but we wouldn't have the shaded areas, right? And we wouldn't have that photovoltaic system that we mentioned before, too. So I think what we're looking for is, you know, talking about some decision timeline stuff. So back in July 15th, you know, we talked about approval of the property tax abatement, today actually. You know, on August 6th, we're planning on coming back to the council and talk about, you know, those alternates, you know, can we do the project budget in project as it is and include these alternates? And then we'd also look to approve the guaranteed maximum price. And that's really what would come back to the contractor, HNU, to say, here is a change order at this time for the amount of the construction contract, guaranteed maximum price of, we're hoping, $5.8 million, as they said. It might come in lower than that. We might have a favorable bidding environment for the next two or three weeks and be able to, you know, reduce that number. And that's kind of where we're at with the decision timeline on it. So I have one last slide. I was going to stop though before I moved on. Do I have any questions from this?
Go ahead, Member Jackson.
So two things. On the solar panels, when we get farther into this, if we approve going forward, I'd like to see sort of, you know, it used to be when you talked about solar panels, how many years would it take to pay them off? So that analysis financially, approximately, you know, it costs as much, it'd take 50 years to pay back on energy savings or 10 years, something like that. And then the other is some revenue from the rental space, what that would be. And yeah, so those are my requests as we move forward, if we move forward tonight, so.
The first part of it I can gather for you, yes, the payback period. The second half, but I think that's a very question. Yeah.
Other questions?
Okay, I'm looking at Better Together, and I'm looking at the page on the abatement. And one of the questions is, will the bonds funded with tax abatement also pay for other improvements? And the response is no. The tax abatement will only be used to pay for a new pump house and systems to keep the Aquatics Center operational. And I, it's late, so, you know, but it sounds like when you go back to those slides where you were saying option A or option B or, yeah, alternate B, alternate A, is that the pump house and the systems?
Option A and option B are not the pump house or the systems. They're opportunity spaces that we looked at this to take advantage of.
Okay. And here's where I get, because this is a lot of money and we're hearing from residents and, you know, just having a straight answer. And it just, it kind of depends on where you're looking, what you're, you know, what may or may not be. And that, that does make me uncomfortable, just in terms of.
I think some of the consideration behind those two, though, are that we have to take down something if we're going to do this project, and so do we want to replace that or not? And the other is taking advantage of an opportunity that's integral to the project itself, right? That's the rentable cabanas.
Yeah, that's correct.
True. It's just in terms of being straight with residents. And I can see the replacement.
Yeah.
That makes sense, but, and I think people are looking at this and they're, they're thinking about, well, I'm going to stop.
So to the point that, this isn't for you, Ms. Rotten, it's more for Manager Neil, I think. The point that Member Pierce raised early on, I think, is that, and we've had this conversation, we had it last year, he works on the budget, we deferred some things like Lewis Park. Now, fortunately, we've got a $3.4 million surplus. We're going to talk about what to do with that. And I would think this, this might enter into that conversation in terms, least in Has staff thought at all about what we? Thinking about the parameters that we've talked to you about, the budget for next year. Have you given any thought to what we probably can't do if we do this?
I think in our current budget models, we're factoring in the debt service that would, that we'd have to bear in order to do this project.
Maybe the better question would have been, are there things that you think we can't do that are in the capital improvement plan, for example? Because we would choose to make this decision tonight to take care of something that we own.
Well, this is, this, the funding vehicle for this is bringing in money outside of the typical CIP levy or other revenue sources. So this should not impact other projects that are currently scheduled to be funded. Is that, am I answering that question?
Well, it's still taxpayer money. So that means $903,000 a year that our taxpayers are going to have to pay over the life of the debt.
Yes.
Coming from somewhere.
Right. This is a tax levy if we decide to go that direction. That's right.
Yeah. Well, that's why I say if we tell you not to, if we tell you to stay within certain parameters on the levy, does that potentially affect other things that we might otherwise have been determined to do or?
Oh, for sure, for sure. Yeah, there's a lot of things where, on the operating side and capital side, given the parameters to stay under the 10% level.
And I get the sense from the council that they're willing to look at that. Let this analyze, right?
So.
Member Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm looking at this resolution that's before us, and it's a resolution relating to a tax abatement, TFR hearing, and general obligation tax abatement bonds, granting the abatement and approving the issuance of the bonds. So would we be voting tonight to issue bonds?
No.
Okay. Help me understand that, if you would please, Mr. Anhut.
The abatement resolution before you is offering essentially the preliminary authorization to be able to issue bonds, so I.
It makes us eligible, but it doesn't authorize.
Yeah, we have not engaged the market at all to bid out the financing for this project. Typically, in our process, once you've moved ahead and approved a project and actually got the construction numbers for the actual bonding amount, we do come before you with a, usually a resolution that packages it together with what other bonding needs are going to be moving ahead with that financing. Council does approve how those bonds will be placed in the market, whether it's through a competitive bidding process or negotiating with a particular underwriter or some other kind of mechanism. And then ultimately, we come back yet again after that bidding, the financing bidding is complete and present the results of that sale and a resolution is adopted by the council choosing to accept the terms of that financing and lock in the debt that's been authorized. So we do anticipate there would be at least two more times before we get to that stage that you've actually reviewed financing proposals and authorized the issuance of the bonds to close on an actual transaction.
Okay. Thank you.
I don't see what, I don't see what you're saying, how what you're saying is consistent with 4.01.
Yeah.
The issuance of the bonds in the aggregate amount, principal amount, not exceeding 8.985 million for the purpose of financing the project is hereby approved.
I think the bond attorney was drafting it in the authorization that the council would have the authority on behalf of the city to approve bonds for this project. Again, there is no authorization to put forward a security behind those bonds. There's no award to a specific entity for the placement of those bonds or anything in that resolution that we would normally see within a, an actual award of sale resolution for a bond transaction.
So does this resolution provide for you to go to market to see what the rates are?
No, it doesn't, actually.
Even though it looks like it does? I mean, that's how I read that first sentence. And I still take it that if you came back and said, yeah, we can do, we can do this deal with company X at 3% interest, we could still say no.
Oh, absolutely. And I think you'd have the opportunity to say.
Decide not to issue the bonds.
Correct.
If the cost was too high. Or what about the other part of it here where, I think it, Mr. Rotten and Director Vedder are asking us to authorize the entering into a contract with HGA for a amount not to exceed 8.95.
That's the, the design contract, but not, we're not awarding a construction contract with this tonight.
Yeah. So if you remember, you know, we talked about we're proceeding with the design contract, but that would be HGA. We've already authorized them to take the design to a certain point. This is just the construction administration. That's the actual, you know, work throughout the construction project. We're also asking to proceed the contract through Tegra. They're our owner's representative for this project. We have a master services agreement with them. They're working with us on a number of projects throughout the city already. That is a portion of the contracts that we're asking to approve. And then we're notifying you that we'll be back in August with a, what's considered a construction change order technically with HNU Construction. We signed a contract with them, just basically allowing them to go out to bid. It was a $0 value contract back in June. That came through part of the consent agenda. We identified at that time that we would come back in August at a later date with what that guaranteed maximum price is. This is the similar process that we followed for Fire Station Number Two. If you remember, we started the design and I guess we engaged with our general contractor early on throughout the design process, made sure that we had the design right, we had the needs of the department right. And then we came back at a later date, and it was a very large change order that we essentially signed. And that's a common practice in the construction industry. It's, you know, called a CMAR, and then you do a guaranteed maximum price after the design is finalized. So everybody has a little bit of, the CMAR is construction manager at risk so that they have some, you know, risk on their end to make sure that they're matching that guaranteed maximum price, provided that the project doesn't go out of scope or scale on our behalf.
Okay.
And then the final part is we're asking to waive building permits for these for this. This is, this is pretty standard to what we do to most city projects like this.
So their first request from a motion standpoint is to, deals with resolution, proposed resolution 2025-45 for the adoption of a property tax abatement and the issuance of general obligation tax abatement bonds, which Mr. Anhut has helped explain. Is there anyone who cares to make that motion?
I'll make that motion. A second.
We've got a motion to adopt resolution 2025-45 by Member Jackson, second by Member Agnew, to adopt, for the adoption of a property tax abatement strategy and the issuance of general obligation tax abatement bonds relative to the Edina pool. Any further discussion?
Yeah. I want to go on record as saying, I see this as we have a pool or we don't have a pool at this point. That if we close it for two years to go to a referendum and everything, I think if we made the decision to not go forward with this, our council chambers would be filled with parents, angry parents, in huge numbers. And I don't like the way the headline would look. City Council votes to close the pool. And I think that's where we're at with the state of this facility. I don't like this. We'll apply what I call the Pierce Rule to look at if we're going to raise the taxes, raise expending here, we have to take something away there. And we'll, we'll have that rigorous analysis later, but I, I don't think I would enjoy this job very much if we closed the Edina pool.
Member Pierce. Thank you, Member Jackson, for the comment.
Thank you, Member Jackson. Yeah.
Just a single word of wisdom.
Yeah. I don't know if it's because it's 1108 or what, but like sitting here now, when we started the meeting, I kind of felt like this was a no-brainer to me. And now, sitting here, I'm not sure it is. And I don't know, the challenge for me is I don't know what I would ask for to get there. Because it seems like spending the $9 million doesn't really get us to a point where we have this gem of an asset in Edina. And like, I kind of want that, but I don't know how to fund that. And so then I, do you do the bare minimum and try to leverage the revenue that you generate to then grow into whatever that vision is? Well, we can't do that because if we don't do some of the amenity upgrades, we probably aren't going to generate the revenue. We won't continue to generate the revenue. And so I, yeah, I, yeah, I don't know. This is a tough one. And just to be clear on this, the motion that's on the floor really is us just saying, yes, let's, let's keep moving forward to figure out what we're going to do and how much it's going to cost. And I'm like, I'm okay with continuing, but I really don't know how to give direction on what I would expect to. on what I would expect to see that would make me feel like this is a good investment. So that's not very helpful, but that's how I feel.
Member Richard.
This is a hard one. And, I mean, the Edina Aquatic Center, I took my kids there. I understand that it is a facility that people use and love. It's also open 10 weeks and three days during the year. And for me, I keep looking at that $903,676 figure for the next 15 years, and that's getting pretty close to what Fire Chief Slama needs to fund all those firefighters if he doesn't get the safer grant. And I know that we're committed to keeping the levy under two figures. I don't necessarily agree with that, but I feel like when we have these isolated decisions, and I know that we can decide not to move forward, but I, I feel like we're just sort of kicking the can down the road, and that this particular method of financing and this figure is too big. And I just, it's really hard. And it's, it's hard, because it's, it's like, you know, you're saying, we're not going to take that trip that we've been talking about for a long time, because we've got to replace the roof on the house, or something like that. But, and I will probably get some nasty emails, but I, I'm having a real challenging time with this. Plus, you know, I see the changes that need to be made in order to make it profitable, but then at the same time, you know, what about the foundation of the pool? What about other things that I don't know about? And so that's where I am, and I know it's getting late.
Thanks. Member Agnew, your pearls of wisdom?
I'm ready to vote.
For me, this conversation has been really valuable. I think it's helped lift some of the clouds for me and some of the uncertainty, both with respect to the comment that Member Pierce just made about, and affirmed by Member Agnew that we're, we're just taking the next step here in the analysis. But I think more fundamentally, what's been worrying me is that we've got some budget parameters that we've asked staff to look at, and then we get something like this that comes along, and I think Member Pierce put it well, he said, this doesn't change the landscape in terms of what we're, what we're requesting from a council standpoint of our staff to be mindful of our citizens' capacity for paying property tax. So I think that's important, and I like that common view of it. And I think we'll figure that out, how to, how to do this. So we got, you know, who knows what that asset is worth on the balance sheet? Do we have a?
I'm sure we have a valuation for it for insurance purposes, but-
50, 60 million dollar asset sitting in a prime location.
Replacing it, replacement costs would be something of that nature.
Yeah, any more, it might be more than that. So I'm going to support going to this next step with the understanding that this is all part of the big tax picture that we have to look at. The budget picture, I guess, is a better way to put it. I'm comfortable moving forward to the next step, and probably authorizing those design services too, so we can keep the ball moving. Well, Member Jackson, you're on a, you're on a run here. You want to move this one too?
Already.
Was it second?
I lost, I lost my train of thought. I lost my memory somewhere between 1110 and 1114. Got a motion in the second, and we've had some comment. Yeah, that's right. Thank you. Okay. So any further discussion? All those in favor of adopting resolution 2025-45 for the adoption of a property tax abatement and issuance of general obligation tax abatement bonds relative to the Edina pool, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Nay.
Carried. Resolution 2025-45 is approved. Then let's go, jump to 9.5, which is the approval for purchase and award of contracts for construction administration. This is the one that you wanted us to take up next?
Yes, it is.
It involves the HGA and the Tegra.
That's correct.
Folks, from a design standpoint? Okay. The, the header on the motion, it says, approve the request for purchase and award of contracts for construction administration, construction and owner's representation with HGA and Tegra. This is what you're talking about in terms of the design elements of it. That's all the further we're going at this point in time.
Well, we, we finished the design, so really this is for us to manage their contract throughout the construction period, right? And then Tegra would be providing those services to help the project move along throughout the construction period.
Okay. Thank you for that.
And the request to purchase nomenclature is our standard, standard nomenclature for this.
So the motion would be to approve a request for purchase and award of contracts for construction administration, construction and owner's representation with HGA and Tegra with a project budget overall of 8.988 million. Is there a motion of that effect?
Still moved.
Second.
Member Agnew moves. Member Jackson, second. Some motion is stated. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I-
Yes, go ahead.
I don't, I guess I don't understand that. So are, are we saying that we have, you've done the design, and are we approving, by approving this resolution, are we approving the project? Are we essentially saying, yep, we agree, let's replace the pump room, and then alternative A slash B, let's spend the $9 million?
We will come back to you with the construction contract, which is the bulk of that, in August, and then you would have the opportunity to vote on that at that time, right? So that, that would be part of either consent agenda, or we would bring it back in the same form. And then we would also talk about those alternates that we mentioned, and council will have an opportunity to weigh in on both of those. Overall project cost, as well as that. You can always, at that time, say, no, we don't want to move forward of this project.
But what this project involves is the, but it does involve the expenditure of funds. And the Tegra agreement would be at 174,000 approximately, and there's no, there's no defining what the HGA amount is, or is it by the hour?
No, that's, it's, it will be by the hour billed that way, but it's about $340,000. We've already spent on design thus far with HGA, close to a half million dollars on this. And that's throughout the iterations over the last two and a half, three years. And that's on par for a construction project of this nature, that, that cost is.
We're not approving the construction budget.
Right. Okay. I just-
Good question.
Yeah, I, I don't know, sitting here tonight, I'm not sure if we go through the process and you come back and ask for approval of what we've loosely described today, I don't know that I would approve that project.
So if, if you're asking about the owner's representative costs, as well as the construction administrative costs, if we didn't move forward at the project, we would not have to spend those funds. We've spent some funds to date on both of those, and there would be shutdown costs, but we wouldn't have to, you know, spend any of the funds or in either of those, because it is billed by the hour as they're doing the work.
Yeah, no, I, so I, just being really transparent, I, I don't know if I would spend the money, spend the $9 million to do what you've described today. So this resolution is saying, let's keep going. Like I said before, let's refine whatever words you choose to put in there. But if we go through that, and you come back with the same thing, just a different number, I don't know that I, today, I guess I wouldn't be comfortable, because I'm just not sure that's the right thing to do. And so you're asking us to just be comfortable with that ambiguity, you'll come back with a project-
For now, yeah.
Yeah, that defines, here's what we're going to spend it on.
Yep.
Are you thinking that it should be more expensive, based on the conversation we've had?
That could be. Yeah, I, I don't know.
Just don't know.
Yeah, I'm just not sure. Yeah. This is just more ambiguity than, than I've dealt with in a while, so I don't know. And that's a big price tag.
Yeah. I think, I thought, Member Jackson kind of hit the nail on the head when, you know, you said, either we have a pool, or we don't have a pool next year.
Precisely.
I, at noon, when I met with Manager Neal, I was kind of prepared to take our chances on bailing wire and duct tape for another year, where we analyze the whole thing.
Right, yeah.
But if it goes down, we're out of season, and then we've got all these folks we've disappointed. We've got contracts probably with swim clubs and everything else. And I feel like we've got in an awkward spot here.
Yeah, I, it feels like an awkward spot. And I, like, you're not asking, no one is asking us to choose between public safety and a pool. Nobody is saying that. But it kind of feels like that. And so obviously, we're not, I would assume we're not going to say, yep, we can do without, you know, EMS resources. So I think we're going to be in a situation where we're going to do both. I'm still going to say, well, we need to be under 10%.
Yeah.
But then we're not seeing a picture of, well, these are the puts and takes to get there. We won't see that till third week of August.
August 20th. August 19th.
August 19th. And so, like, sitting here today, I get, you're right, you're asking us to just let you spend more money to figure out what to do. Okay.
You know, one option, you know, as Director Miller pointed out, is we, we can pull these two contracts from this request, and we can present all three of these at once. So we can present the guaranteed maximum price, the owner's representative contract, as well as the added design contract administration all at once in one package, so you can review all of it together, along with those alternates. That would, you know, make you feel more comfortable. So it'd allow us to progress and continue on with the project.
Yeah.
And we would get bids back in, you know, the interim, and then, like I said before, we'll be back in August with an overall picture of what those costs are.
I don't think that's your, I don't think that's your point, though, is it?
No. When you come back in August, it'll be the 19th, right?
Right.
Yeah.
So what we had on here was coming back August 6th.
We're coming back August 6th.
Okay.
And so maybe my question would be to Manager Neal, can we try and cascade these in a different order, and what are the implications of that? Of, one, when do we find out about the grant for EMS fire? Two, can we have the conversation on budget on August 19th prior, and then maybe push this one to either directly after? I'd leave that to you, right? But at least give us the ability to stack rank this against everything else that we're considering, have a rough percentage, because I still don't think that we've even gotten the swag of we're at, currently at 9.7%, or currently we're at 13%, to really know where we're at. Is it possible to just rearrange some of the order on this, but still try and keep it tight, so that we can, like, alleviate some of these concerns that we have, and validate that we are comfortable? Or maybe the alternative is, hey, we actually have found a way to say we want to spend 10 million instead, to really make it a best-in-class? And it, because I think that there are some things that we're even asking, like, are we leaving things on the table by just doing this part of it? And then maybe that also provides a little bit additional time to, to think through some of those, like, different package scenarios with a potential viewpoint on return on investment, or how we think it'll improve the overall experience for users to think about how we're driving additional usage, which maybe is asking a lot, but between now and maybe the first meeting of September. But maybe that's an ask that will help alleviate some of this concern.
I think we, you know, we'll have that discussion about what the impact of the, of the pool, of the pool approvals that are necessary for that project to come together for that 19th, August 19th. We have some things that are in a queue that we, we just, we are waiting for to be able to complete our budget proposal for you. I can tell you, we are, we are going to hit the target that you gave me. We are going to get the target. It'll be under that target that you gave me, so. But in terms of when we could do that, we might be able to do all of that on the 19th. We'll have that, we'll have that discussion.
Another aspect to that we haven't thought about, Member Jackson had her budget and CIP with us, or with her. You know, there might be some things in the CIP that we can look, look at deferring to. We haven't looked at that yet, that are set for 2026, as part of this, part of this goal to achieve some reasonable budgetary increase. So there's many things to think about, is all the point I was trying to make.
I, I think what Member Agnew framed, and granted, you may do a different sequencing, but I think the, my takeaway was that would get me out of feeling like I am going to be making a decision on spending $9 million, and I don't know if I have $9 million to spend, right? And so I think some kind of sequencing would address that. And then the question of, should I spend nine, or should it really be 15? You're going to bring that back too, at that time. And I'm just making that number up. But, but you are, right? You, we talked about, is this, are we just doing the pump and alternate A and B? And I thought you mentioned that there could be some other things that we could do to raise, generate more revenue? Maybe there's not. And if that's the case, that's fine. I'm not asking to spend 15 million. I'm saying you're going to have time to ground on exactly what you need to spend.
Never get a park and rectors' hope, hopes up for something like this.
I didn't mean to do that. Hopes dashed. That's not my point. You're going to take some time to figure out and confirm, or refine, this is what this project is, here's what it's going to cost, and we're going to have the time to be able to say, yep, we have, yes, we can afford that.
Yes.
Yeah. Mayor, Council, Councilmember Pierce, I just want to also set expectations that we've been truly focused on this first portion of it.
Yep.
And the rest, we talked about Horizon. So what we can put together is probably going to be a very rough magnitude, very loose. It's going to be a leap of faith, I think, for both of us to discuss that, but we will come back with something for you.
Yeah. That's good for me. I'm ready to vote.
Yeah. I'm glad we had that discussion. All right, we've got a motion in the second with respect to approving the request for purchase and award of contracts for construction administration, construction and owner's representation with HGA and Tegra with a project budget of 8.988 million. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the motion is stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Nay.
Carried? Approval is made. Now let's loop back on the agenda to a matter that Manager Neal has, and that is the potential allocation of the 2024 unassigned general fund balance, which is our surplus, another way of saying our surplus.
Thank you, Your Honor. Yes, you received the 2024 independent audit at our previous meeting. It is our custom to ask the council to accept that audit, and you made that action. It's also our custom here to allocate the unassigned general fund, fund balance. We do that every year. We have a policy that says we will put it into our, into our construction fund, so that it can be distributed via the, the standard kind of CIP analytical process that involves staff and council. But you always have, and I think almost every year, we bring-
But you always have, and I think almost every year, we bring to you sort of a special project that, that exists maybe outside of that regular CIP process for some reason or another. And we have two of those this year that we would propose using this, using these unassigned fund balance dollars for. One is to restore funding, restore funding to the, to the Lewis Park, Park Shelter. So it was in the CIP at 900,000, and we're proposing to use 900,000 of the $3,129,427. That's the unassigned fund balance. And the other one is to allocate money into, into a new budget, a project budget for the quiet zones analysis. And I've talked to, to Director Milner about that as well. While this was in the, while this was in the council packet, I did receive an idea from Councilmember Jackson to take the balance and instead of allocating that balance back into the construction fund to be distributed by a separate action of the council, that we consider, that the council consider allocating it directly to this project, the, the pool project, the Aquatic Center project, and bring down, bring down the, the amount that we would potentially borrow if we go forward with that project. So it'd be 1.9 million, so almost $2 million that would take off, off of the 8.9 million. So that would require an amendment to the, to the action that's in front of you tonight.
Thoughts from council members, based on the conversation we just finished and understanding we've got, call it a surplus of $3.1 million to work with in terms of how to assign those funds or reserve them for now? What are people's thoughts?
So, thank you, Mr. Mayor. For the Lewis Park and the quiet zones, we've had conversation about those, and so I'm, I'm definitely supportive of both of those. I like the idea of potentially allocating this towards the Aquatic Center as well, just given like the depth of conversation that we had. I also question, almost again, going back to the order of operations of, should we table the remaining component of that decision until after we look at the broader kind of budget conversation that we're going to have in August? And why I'm saying it like that is, one, I think part of us is still kind of questioning, are we moving forward with this? And what would be the implications then if we allocate it towards this project but decide not to do it? And then, on the other hand, what is the direct impact that it makes to the potential levy if we're taking it from one bucket of infrastructure capital improvement plan and putting, pulling it from a construction budget? Like, I just don't know if that actually changes it or if it kind of keeps it the same. And if so, should we just wait until after? So that's kind of where my questions are at.
So Councilmember Agnew, members of council, if you took this action and assigned, allocated these dollars to this project budget, and you decide not to do the project budget, we'd bring in a new action before you to allocate it directly into the construction fund, which is our standard policy. Your second question, what, we haven't done the math on what this would do to the, but we know, but it would reduce the borrowing, which would reduce the, the debt service, annual debt service. We just, it's not an idea that we evaluated before we brought it to you. So we can, we can certainly do that analysis between now and the next council meeting.
Because I, I think the question then is, the way I'm understanding it out of the gate is, I'm just going to round for, to 2 million for fun. Is it, are we looking at 2 million then reduction from our budget that we're looking at in 2026?
No.
That would be related to this going into the construction pool? Or like, how should I think about that first option, the default, that we are going to be doing this, compared then to this alternative option?
Right. So it doesn't, this decision doesn't defund some other projects, right? Because it's surplus dollars from the previous year and by definition is not assigned to any particular project.
So I understand that, but we, I think we had said that kind of the default of what happens to the surplus is it goes into this construction pool.
Right.
And so, help me understand how that construction pool is used?
Ah, sure.
And if it would be directly used in 2026? Or, because kind of that's how I'm comparing, right? If we used it for the Aquatic Center, we're now then spreading it over 15 years by reducing the amount that we would be bonding for and the repayment amount for that term? Or are we talking about actually reducing by that amount in 2026 as a part of the construction fund?
Ms. Lenz, do you have something you want to say here for this?
I was just going to recommend that maybe we table this particular item, because we don't have to make a decision on this right now, and we can look at it in that broader context.
Sure, we can do that.
Can we still make a decision on the other two so that we can move forward on quiet zone analysis?
You can.
Okay.
And you can even allocate this money to the construction fund. And if we do the project, you can reallocate it to the, to the project fund, right? So it is not, it are, what we would typically do with this money is we would have special projects, and then we'd put the balance of it into the construction fund. The construction fund is used to fund the various CIP projects that are in the capital improvement plan, that are developed typically by staff and approved by council.
Member Rusher.
Just thinking back to the budget and what got cut, and I just want to say, I am so happy that Lewis Park is getting funded. That really means a lot to me, and so I want to acknowledge that. The other item that got cut was six firefighter paramedics. And one of the people who spoke during community comment mentioned these unassigned general fund and sort of made a reference to maybe we could use some money for safety staffing. And I think that was what was implied there. So I did, Manager Neil did say it cannot be used because it's a one-time.
No, I said, I wouldn't recommend it.
You wouldn't recommend it.
Right. It's a one-time revenue, taking up, paying for an ongoing operating expense.
And yet, I am concerned about the staffing levels and just the seriousness of that and getting money ASAP so we can start looking to hire more firefighter paramedics.
I would expect that, based on the action we took in terms of applying for that grant and agreeing to hire those firefighters, that you've built that into the budget that you intend to propose to us.
That's true. That's right.
Okay, so yeah, one of the questions I think Member Agnew had is, you answered, and that was if, if we decided to do the quiet zone study and build the new park building at Park Shelter Building at Lewis and put the rest of it in the construction fund, we can get it back out of there if we decide we want to use it for something else. Well, it's a good place to park it where you get some interest income off of it, I guess. So, Member Agnew, would you want to make a motion of that effect?
So moved.
Second, we get a motion by Member Agnew, second by Member Pierce, to, with respect to the 2024 general fund, unassigned fund balance, spending $900,000 on the Lewis Park Shelter Building project and allocating an additional $250,000 of those funds to the project budget to complete the necessary planning studies to enable the city to pursue quiet zones for at-grade rail crossings of Edina streets and put the balance of the funds into the construction fund on a temporary basis. That's the motion. Any discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the motion stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried? Okay. Okay, sure you don't want to have two meetings in July?
Okay, really quick. I'll try to make this quick. Hi again. Yeah. Oh, yeah, we gotta wait for that. Sorry.
Mayor, you want to introduce the item first?
The Highway 101.
I didn't know if the mayor had introduced this item or if he wanted us to get started. 9.6, correct.
Yeah, it's a different title here. Is that?
What do you have?
This is Resolution 2025-44.
Yeah. And our title, the title on our agenda says, approving the adoption of the city's five-year street reconstruction plan and providing for the sale of.
Correct.
Correct.
That one.
Okay. That's not what the screen says.
It's not what the screen says. We were ahead of you on your introductions, so sorry about that.
So that's, but it's not what the screen says, but it's the same thing?
Yes.
Got it. Okay.
And it says, project funding update.
Because it ties into the bonds we want to be considering.
Actually looking for some action here.
Yeah.
All right, go ahead.
All right, so this is in regards to the street reconstruction plan bond, which allows the city council to seek authorization for bonds to fund street projects subject to a public hearing process and a 30-day reverse referendum, which Nick and Hut from Ellers would touch on a little bit. At our last council meeting on June 17th, a public hearing was held for the Vernon Avenue and Highway 100 interchange for the city-funded portion of the project, with the close of public hearing on Saturday, July 5th of 2025. Again, tonight's meeting purpose is for council to take action on approving Resolution 2025-44 for the adoption of the city's five-year street reconstruction plan and authorizing the issuance of general obligation street reconstruction bonds for the project. With me tonight is Chad Milner, our engineering director, which will, he was prepared, he is prepared to give a project update on the budget. Chad.
Thank you, Paul. So, yeah, a quick update, funding update, really. Here's the goals. We talk about this every biweekly meeting we have with the public. These have been the goals stated for many years now with this project. And again, this is the project that's in full construction right now. So getting to what we really want to talk about tonight, when I was in front of you on April 16th of this year at the contract award, we provided that second row, or that second column with our estimated funding sources. And I highlighted city bonding, Centennial Lakes TIF, and the state bonding request and said, we were looking at 3 million for state bonding, or city bonding. And recall at the council retreat, we were at 4 million, so that number keeps coming down to reduce those debt levy numbers. We brought in utility funds, PACs, and electrical. Centennial Lakes at the time was 250,000. We heard from the council, you wanted to maximize that as much as possible. And then state bonding requests, we got zero this year, similar to last year, so we got zero on that. So the budget at the time was 11 million, 11.3 million of part of that project was our share of it. So tonight, we wanted to make some adjustments to those numbers. We wanted to request city bonding for 2.25 million, maximize the use of the cash balance of the Centennial Lakes TIF district, and bring in 1.5 million, so an increase of 1.25. And then I'm going to note a project increase, so creating a half a million dollar of contingency for the budget and increasing that to approximately 11.8 million for the funding of our side, because we've seen some unknowns. And one of the examples is driving steel piles for the abutments for the bridge. They were supposed to go down 55 feet. Some of them, almost all of them were going 100 feet. So that's double the steel we needed and the operations to pay for it. So we would like to create just a half a million dollar contingency to cover some of these things we're finding within the project. So with that, I'll hand it over to Nick, and he can explain the bond portion.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So very similar action to what we talked about, the tax abatement. As the project stands right now, a city council in Minnesota cannot authorize debt for a similar type of project unless you go through one of the proceedings that is designated within Chapter 475 of Minnesota statutes, which is to hold a public hearing on the issuance of street reconstruction plan bonds. One of the reasons you don't have to do this for your normal street reconstruction activities locally is that you go through an assessment process. The statutes similarly allow for an exemption of this type of proceeding if you are already going through and assigning assessments to repay the debt associated with your street reconstruction needs. So because there are no assessments tied to this project, the council doesn't have authority unless we go through the proceedings. We held a public hearing on June 17th to consider the issuance of up to $3 million of street reconstruction plan bonds. These would be general obligation bonds of the city repaid from a debt levy that would go towards funding the project, as Chad mentioned. The resolution prepared this evening authorizes the issuance of those bonds and opens up a 30-day reverse referendum period, or a 30-day period for potential residents. If at least 5% of the turnout in the last general election choose to come forward, they can sign a petition to make the matter subject to a citywide referendum. If no one does come forward with a valid petition within that 30-day period, then the council is given the authority to choose to issue debt for the project that was discussed in the public hearing. So we already went through that the hearing designated up to 3 million in bonds. As the resolution has been amended after that public hearing to reflect the amount that Chad just mentioned, reducing the potential bonding to 2.25 million dollars in general obligation bonds to fund the completion of this project. Passage of the resolution will start this 30-day petition period today, and it would expire on August 14th in 2025. And if there is no valid petition filed within that period, there would be a subsequent council action to anticipate issuing the bonds in coordination with the potential Aquatic Center project later on this year. So happy to address any questions of the council, but this is just a continuation of the effort and the discussions that we had last month.
Questions for Mr. Anhut? All right. Let's go and get this work done. So the Resolution 2025-44 asks for the adoption of the city's five-year street reconstruction plan and authorizing the issuance of the general obligation street reconstruction bonds. Is that motion framed the way you want it framed? Okay. So is there a motion to that effect from council members?
So moved.
Second.
Member Jackson moves. Member Pierce seconds the approval of Resolution 2025-44 for the adoption of the city's five-year street reconstruction plan and authorizing the issuance of general obligation street reconstruction bonds. Any further discussion on that matter? All those in favor of approving Resolution 2025-44 as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried? Motion's approved, and we will now move on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Resolution 2025-59 would accept donations on behalf of the city of Edina. Is there a motion to adopt that resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Member Jackson moves. Member Pierce seconds the adoption of Resolution 2025-59, which accepts donations on behalf of the city of Edina for this particular reporting period. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of Resolution 2025-59, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried? Resolution 2025-59, accepting donations on behalf of the city of Edina, is adopted. And a couple of things worth noting in here, all the names of the donors and, or individuals or organizations that we put on the website. Susan Bush Naring, $3,200 for a memorial bench at the senior center. That was a very generous gift. And then the Crime Prevention Fund, several different donations to the police department for various programs, including some related to K-9, other things that were deemed a necessity over at the police department. Chief, thanks for providing that information to the crime fund, and good that they respond the way they do. And then just a quick note on the Aquatic Center, there was a $13,000 gift of diving boards from our own Jeff Huggett from the housing foundation. Jeff Huggett and Diane Lindquist, $13,000 for diving boards.
Jeff is an accomplished diver.
Oh. Huh. Well, I hope he got the kind he wanted, put in. All right. The kind he likes. So that's it. We get some other donors as well, that all the folks, your generosity is appreciated regardless of the amount. So, that's done. And let's see, what's next here? Oh, we've got a couple of appointments to talk about. One is Resolution 2025- One is Resolution 2025-60, which would support the board reappointment of Larry Olson to the Nine Mile Creek Watershed District. And I think Councilmember Jackson, you wanted to talk a little bit about this one.
Well, I just wanted to highlight this. I didn't want it on consent agenda, because I'm so proud of the number of Edina citizens who step up and serve on boards across our region, as well as in our city. And Larry has been an outstanding advocate for clean water and works diligently on our Nine Mile Creek Watershed. And I'm thanking for volunteering to do this, and I'm proud that he's going to do it, to put his name forward to do it again.
Yeah, all right, good. Thank you for that. And you want to move the matter?
I will.
Member Jackson moves.
I second.
Member Agnew seconds the approval of Resolution 2025-60, which supports the reappointment of Larry Olson to the Nine Mile Creek Watershed District Board. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Carried. Resolution 2025 is, -60 is adopted, supporting the reappointment of Larry Olson to the Nine Mile Creek Watershed District Board. And then, Member Jackson, next up is the 2025 Student Commission Appointments. You've worked diligently on this over the years, and we look forward to your comments here as well.
Yes, so this year I was joined by Member Pierce and, yes, and Walter Flores was our administrator. Once again, so impressed with the kids in this town. And every single one of the kids we interviewed would have made an outstanding commissioner, so they made the decision very difficult. And before I read the names, Member Pierce, do you have any comments?
Yeah, just briefly, thanks to my colleagues for allowing me the opportunity to participate. And I agree with Member Jackson, everyone who interviewed, it's just amazing when you think about the depth of thinking a lot of kids are doing about bettering their community. And it's just a wonder to, it's wonderful to see that, so thank you.
And we really do value their voices. So with that, I would set forward the following student commissioners. For Arts and Culture Commission, Alvi Bizar Barua; Julia Peterson for the Community Health Commission; Edita Upall; and Aditi Gandhi for the Energy and Environment Commission; Xander Taisho and Genevieve Lasig for the Heritage Preservation Commission; Matthew Wybe and Olivia Duplessis for Parks and Recreation Commission; Sulayman Sayed and Anna Harrington for the Planning Commission; Aditi Ja and Leonor Just; and for the Transportation Commission; Aggie Lasig and Logan Bracken.
Right. Member Jackson moves that slate of folks, young people, for the various boards and commissions designated. And Member Pierce seconds.
Yep.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of adopting the slate of student commissioners with a term starting September 1, 2025, and ending September 1, 2026, as named by Councilmember Jackson, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Carried. That slate of students, student members of those boards and commissions is adopted. And now we are at Manager Neal.
Thank you, Your Honor.
His comments.
Members of council, I've just got a quick, couple of quick updates for you. One, just, we talked about this earlier tonight, but we'll be ready to give you a pretty solid budget forecast and budget presentation at the August 19th meeting. We'll continue to work on the pool aspects of that, to see if we can't coordinate those better, too. One item that was tentatively scheduled for tonight, that I pushed because I think it's going to generate a complicated conversation, is around the Pamela Park tree gift. So we do have that pushed to the August 6th council meeting, and the folks involved in it, who are neighbors, were both informed of that, so they know that. Utility franchise fees, we were getting ready to bring the utility franchise fees to you for, I think we were targeting this meeting, but as we were getting ready to put it to bed, we got a request from XL Energy to have some input, and they shared their input, and they shared some data with us, that caused us to make some potential amendments to the ordinances. We do want to share those with you, and we have those tentatively scheduled for August 3rd as well. And that's all I've got for you. Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you. Also, Member Agnew want to lead us off on council conference?
Yeah, absolutely. It's been a minute since we've all been together. In the month of July, we only have the one meeting, because we're off for the 4th of July. And I usually go to the parade. I missed it this year. My family went, my husband and my daughters went, but I wasn't sure what the bathroom situation would be like, and it was like 95 degrees that day. So I hope everyone else really enjoyed it. But at nine months pregnant, I did not want to participate in that, but I will be there next year. But between now and the next meeting, I probably will have a baby, so I will not be at the August 6th meeting, most likely. So some of these decisions that we have in front of us, I will not be there for, but I will be back for our big budget discussion. I think that's, that's it. Thank you.
Interesting news. Thank you. Member Pierce?
Yeah, that's impressive, just missing this, the one meeting and bringing a human being into the world. That's awesome. And I have nothing to top that, so.
Member Jackson?
Well, we had the League of Minnesota Cities Conference, lots to talk about, but the one thing I am going to talk, two things. One is, speaking of utilities, we had a conversation about the right-of-way, and I know a lot of people with US Internet are upset about their yards being chewed up yet again, and they recommended that when we do utility franchise agreements, that you spend some time talking about how can we coordinate not ripping up people's yards multiple times with streets and then with utilities. Sometimes it's unavoidable, but it's, that's the time to have the conversation. And then they had an idea to build community and have a Name the Snowplow contest, which I love that, and also maybe Name the Street Sweeper, which everybody's excited about is snowplows. So I want to throw that idea out there, just as something fun that I learned.
Thank you. Member Rusher?
I want to thank taxpayers for the support for sending me to Duluth and to the conference. But I want to close before midnight, and I'm super tired, and I'll give my report on that meeting next session.
I'm with you. I was, I still haven't reported out on the US Conference of Mayors meeting, June 19th through the 22nd, down in Tampa, because we haven't been together, as Member Agnew pointed out. But let's hold off on that till the next meeting. That's it for me. Oh, other than to confirm that the 4th of July parade was just terrific. Despite the heat, people had a wonderful time. And the Edina Dash beforehand, to determine, of the 200 runners, who was the fastest kid? Who was the fastest adult female, and who was the fastest adult male? And a 30-something guy named Charlie was the fastest adult male. He and a young guy dueled it out, coming down the, finished, you know, the last block or so. I think he beat a 19-year-old. And then the youngest kid, I think his name was Daniel, he was 10. And then the young woman who won the adult women's race, just moved here from Sydney, Australia, Nina. And Nina and her husband and her two kids just love Edina, and were really happy then to win a gold medal on top of it at the Edina Dash. So that's a good report, a good way to end the meeting, I think, talking about our three residents, Daniel, Charlie, and Nina. Anything further? All right. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
We had a motion by Member Agnew, a second by Member Jackson to adjourn this meeting of the Edina City Council at 11:59 PM on this 15th day of July, 2025. Any discussion? All those in favor of, what are we doing, adjourning? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye. Aye. Opposed? We're adjourned.[1779.11]